Good afternoon, welcome to the August 12th, 2020 session of the Board of Zoning Appeals. In a moment, we will commence the call of our calendar, a copy of which can be found on the town's website. If you wish to join this hearing, you can do so by utilizing the link www.brookhaven.ny.gov/join. Again, www.brokhaven.ny.gov/join. What am I missing there? That's correct. Or by accessing the virtual hearing link found at the meeting page for the Board of Zoning Appeals. Each of the applications before the board today will consist of three parts: a presentation of the applicant, the testimony of those wishing to speak on the application, and finally, the rebuttal testimony of the applicant, limited to those issues brought up by persons speaking in opposition. At the conclusion of each of the presentations, this board will take one of three actions. We can decide the case today by a motion to grant or to deny the relief requested. Alternatively, we can close the public hearing and place this matter on decision calendar. Finally, we can hold the public hearing open to a future date. If the motion that you hear after, and the end of your case is a motion to grant the application, what this means is simply the relief that you seek from the board has been granted, a grand edible issue from the Board of Appeals' Office within seven to 10 business days. Once received, that is a document that you take back to the building department to continue with your endeavor. If the motion that you hear is a motion to close the public hearing and place a matter on decision calendar, what this means is that your hearing, your virtual hearing was held today, and the record is now closed. The board has under the code 62 days to render a decision. Once that decision is rendered, the apple don't be notified directly. Again, those interested in viewing a copy of the decision can do so by accessing it off of the town's website, under the calendar and agenda links for the Board of Zoning Appeals, once that decision has been filed with the town clerk. Finally, if the motion that you hear at the end of your case is a motion to hold the public hearing open to a future date, this occurs when an applicant has not met conditions precedent to the relief requested, or maybe more commonly, where the board requires additional information before deciding the application. In this instance, the public hearing record is held open to a future date. On that future date, the required information is made part of the record, and then the matter closed for decision. I will let you know that we acknowledge receipt of all notice documents for the cases being called, and with that, I'm going to ask you to give your attention for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good afternoon again, welcome to the August 12th, 2020 session of the Board of Zoning Appeals. May we have roll call?
Board members, James Mazzarella.
Present.
Charles Lazaru.
Present.
Rick Cunha.
Present.
Howard Berksen.
Present.
Deputy Chair, James Wisdom.
Present.
Chairman Paul DeChance.
President, we have several postponements from today's agenda. In a moment, we'll hear motions concerning those cases and the dates they're being adjourned to.
From the regular calendar, case number 12 in the name of Panico, requesting September 9th, and the rest are from the holdover calendar, case number 43 of July 15th, 2020, Patrick O'Shaughnessy, September 9th, number 17 of May 6, 2020, Carol Mantle, September 9th, numbers 45 and 46 of July 15th, 2020, Randy Warner and Clifford Lorenzo, September 9th, and numbers 3 through 6A of July 11th, 2018, for board to set hearing date for landmark properties, September 9th.
Does one have a motion?
Second.
Mr. Wisdom moves to adjourn those cases. Mr. Cunha, seconds, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries with that, then we can commence this hearing with, I believe it's case number one.
PDQ Equities LLC, Peter Calucci, 50, Middle Island, Yap Hank Road, Middle Island, property is located on the west side of 10th Avenue, 375 feet north of Ridgewood Avenue, Holtsville. Applicant requests rear and side yard variances for existing in-ground swimming pool, rear yard variance for existing roof over concrete patio.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Vega.
I have Anthony Matola for the applicant.
Very good. Mr. Matola, you just need to unmute yourself.
Good.
How are we? Very good. Anthony, can you hear us?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you loud and clear. Let's just start with having you sworn.
I have the truth, the whole truth, nothing but truth to help you.
I do.
Very good. Mr. Matola, your appearance for the record, please.
Good evening, good afternoon, board members, Mr. Chairman, Anthony Matola for the applicant, P.O. Box 567, Rocky Point, New York, 11778.
Very good. What would you like to tell us about this application?
For the record, my client bought this property in May of 2020 and is in contract to sell with a closing date on or around August 30th to a single family. There was a permit on this property, 12B 79026, for the pool that went in front of the board in 2005 for a nine-foot side yard and a 10-foot rear yard that was granted. Marlin Pools put the pool in in 2005, there seems to be a discrepancy of 1.4 on the rear and 1.7 on the side, which is why we are here today for the 88 on the rear and the 75 on the side. There are trees on both sides of the pool where there is no sight hindrance from the neighbors. The pool is exactly 10 foot, 7 inch away from the house, which I tend to believe that might have been the issue in 2005, when Marlin Pools put the pool in. If you look at an aerial, you can tell that there are many pools in the same area or even closer, and the subject property is the only property where there is just nowhere else the pool could be placed to make sense to put an application into the board. All the other properties are either square or rectangle in depth, the subject property is rectangle in width, and as far as the roof over concrete, once again, it does not affect the nature and characteristics of the neighborhood. Any questions or comments?
Thank you, Mr. Matola. Questions from the board?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Berksen.
Anthony, the rear yard grant that was previously made was what, 10 feet?
10 feet to the west side, which is the rear, and now it's 88. And it was not...
No, to the rear is, oh, I see, that's the rear yard, and that's the, so it's, the front yard is 10th Avenue, right?
Yeah, I mean, as you could see from the layout of...
The side yard, the side yard variance that was granted was, was how, was how much?
Nine feet.
So it got a foot and a half there and a little less than a foot and a half for the rear yard. And the pool is in, how long has it been there?
2005, Marlin Pools put it in, and I could be wrong, you know, I don't know what went down in 2005, but it seems like there might have been a discrepancy because how close the pool is to the house. I really can't answer that, so that's why we're here for the 75.
Yeah, but the major point, whatever occurred, is that the difference between the previous grant and the, and the application now, whether or not that's a significant amount or not. I have nothing further.
Thank you, Mr. Berksen. Is there anything further from the board? Does the board have a motion?
Chairman, I move to grant the application submitted type two.
Second.
Motion is by Mr. Berksen, seconded by Mr. Cunha, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thanks, have a good night.
You too.
Case number two, Nicholas Candela, 41, Rolling Road, Miller Place, located on the north side of Rolling Road, 268 feet west of View Drive, Miller Place. Applicant requests side yard variance for existing detached garage, not built in accordance with permit number 17B 115431.
Mr. Chairman, I have Nicholas Candela, the applicant.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and board.
Mr. Candela, yes, we can see you and hear you. Just going to ask you to give your attention to the board's attorney, John Doyle. He's in swear you in.
Swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but truth to help you.
I do.
All right, then, Mr. Candela, I want you to know that we are familiar with the application and that we see that it was prior board action in 2017 granting excess square footage for this garage. You're here today for a side yard variance for the structure. Is that correct? What would you like to tell us specifically?
Well, when I built the garage originally, I was working off a survey that came with our house when we purchased it between four and five years ago. It had listed a stockade fence that I went off of, that was fairly close to the property line. As you could see from the current survey that we had done after we submitted the final paperwork, the vinyl fence is fairly far off, I think about a foot and a half off the property line. You know, in hindsight, I would have, knowing what I know now, I would have, you know, had the survey done ahead of time just to, you know, not run into this issue, but, you know, it was, it was an error on my part when I had the foundation board. So, you know, I tried to get some, you know, detached garages in the area. Unfortunately, there's none, you know, the foot and a half difference that, you know, below the requirement. I don't feel that it's substantial to cause any negative effect to the neighborhood. So, you know, I don't know if you guys have any questions, but...
Thank you, Mr. Candela. Questions from the board?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Mazzarella.
Chairman, you mentioned the previous board action was that to do with the square footage discrepancy that Mr. Candela just stated, or?
Yes, it was, there was actually no discrepancy there. The request was for an oversized garage, 696 square feet, where 600 is permitted, and that was a grant by the board in 2017. There was no request for a side yard variance. I believe it's a 10-foot side yard requirement here, and it appears as though Mr. Candela measured from the fence and that's the property line.
And, okay, so first question would be the lot to the, to the side where that vinyl fence is located. So where are we?
41. It would be 43, I think.
So, okay, so that, that lot is, is, is your, is your neighbor to that, correct?
Yep.
And so the fence is actually on your neighbor's property, I guess, right?
Correct, it's about a foot and a half in.
Okay. Well, first question is, you have any, any issues come about either the fence or the garage in and of itself?
No, no issues. I mean, I've talked to my neighbors about, you know, this hearing, and, you know, in my discussions, no one's had an issue. I believe, you know, correct me if I'm wrong, anyone on the board, but I think it's seven and a half yard.
That's correct, Mr. Candela. I just took a look at that. This is a B-zone, the requirement is seven and a half feet for that detached garage, and you're holding five feet, seven and three-quarter inches.
Correct. You know, it would have definitely still been a few inches off, you know, if I measured off of a proper survey, but, you know, not as substantial, but, I don't know if you have any other questions, Mr. Mazzarella?
And I'm sorry, you said the garage was built when?
Probably two years ago, two to two and a half years ago.
And, okay, just major concern was the neighbor, so no issue with the neighbor, with the height of the garage or anything like that. Is that vinyl, that's a solid vinyl?
Correct, vinyl siding. It's under the height minimum. I think the most recent survey hopefully has the, the height of the garage I had resubmitted, you know, when I tried to close out the paperwork, but I believe it's 13, just a little over 13 feet.
Okay. No further questions, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Mazzarella. Is there anything further from the board? Does the board have a motion?
Yeah, I'd like to grant the application type two.
Second.
Motion is by Mr. Mazzarella, seconded by Mr. Wisdom, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you all, have a great day.
Thank you.
Case number four, Henry and Gail Bramwell, Family Trust, care of Michelle Quitrally, 100 Colonial Drive, East Patchogue, property is located on the west side of Schoenfeld Boulevard, 335 feet north of Washington Place, Patchogue. Applicant requests permission for existing garage conversion to habitable space, sunroom with electric and second-story dormer.
Mr. Chairman, I have Michelle Quitrally for the applicant.
Ms. Quitrally, we can see you, but we can't hear you yet. If you can unmute yourself. Yes, Michelle, we still can't hear you. I think that you're working on it. Michelle, you want to keep working on that and have us move to the next case? All right, that's what I'm going to do. We'll just keep, we'll just keep you there, and if you get yourself unmuted, we'll take you following case number five.
Case number five, David Knapp, care of Christine Nicole, 18 Railroad Avenue, Center Riches, property is located on the south side of Senex Avenue, 784 feet, south of Grove Street, Center Riches. Applicant requests front yard setback variances from Senex Avenue for two existing sheds located in the required front yard. Height variance for existing six-foot high fence located in the front yard, Senex Avenue.
Mr. Chair, I have Chris Nicole for the applicant.
I don't see her promoted yet, but...
Hello?
Yes. Yes, Christine, I'm trying to find you in my list of faces. And I don't see you yet.
You don't have to see me.
I wish I could say that. Is there a reason why I'm not getting any, or any video? Chris, do you have your, your video on?
I thought I did.
You want to check that for us?
Okay. I don't know where that would be. You can hear me, though. I don't know why you can't...
I can hear you clearly. I can, I can tell without seeing you that you're in your kitchen because that's where you're, oh, there you are.
Okay, I pressed something else. All right, I got it.
All right, you're back. Well, welcome, welcome again. Let's, let's start with having you sworn.
Certainly.
I tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but truth to help you.
I do, thank you. Christine Nicole, offices at 18 Railroad Avenue, Center Riches, New York. The net property is located in Center Riches. They purchased this property in 2011 and immediately put in the two sheds for storage since there is no garage. The property is on the west Senex Creek and on Senex Creek also. As you can see by the survey, most of the property fronts the water. And although it is 3.3 acres, most of the property has wetland vegetation and tidal pools located on it. So it's a very sensitive piece of property. Senex Avenue dead ends at the water. It's there that we have the fence. There's large hedges, very tall hedges along the front of the property, goes all around block, continues, which hides the shed that's in the front yard in front of the house, and then the fencing goes down to the water. That's both for privacy because kids do go down there and sit there with their cars and stuff. And if you'll notice, I provided a photograph of the house that's opposite this beautiful house, and that house is boarded up, and it has been that way for at least five years, and it's a real eyesore. And again, kids hang out at that house. So that was another reason that he replaced a see-through fence with a solid fence. The fence does not obstruct traffic since it is at a dead end. These fences and sheds in front yards are quite common. I provided a few pictures, but most of the houses on Senex are on the water on that side, and they do have accessory structures in their front yard. The board has any questions?
Thank you. Questions from the board?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Wisdom.
Yes. So, Christine, I see it from the satellite, Google Maps, and both of them are on Senex, on the avenue where it runs down into, I guess that's the bay?
Yes, it is, it's creek, yes.
So I could see partially a small shed under the trees.
Correct.
On, I guess that's the east side.
Yeah, the northeast.
Yes, it is, the northeast side.
Yes.
So, and then there's another one to the other side of the property past the driveway.
Correct.
You can hardly see that. So this is not...
You can't see that at all with the hedges, you're right.
And this is not out of character with the neighborhood, correct?
Not at all, not at all. And again, this doesn't affect anybody because there was nobody opposite. I mean, even, even with that house, I mean, when that, when that house ever gets occupied, it would probably be knocked down. But it, this fence does not affect anybody, neither does the shed.
And I can see that there's others in the neighborhood, so I have nothing further.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Wisdom. Yes, Chris, this, these are accessory structures in the front yard, normally prohibited, but this is, this is a waterfront parcel, seems to be jutting out, and in these instances, we have on occasion in the past seen accessory structures, garages and sheds in front yards. And when you responded to Mr. Wisdom's question concerning whether they are common in the area, that's what you were referring to, correct?
That's correct, I was. And if you will note, almost all the property is on the water except for on the piece on Senex Avenue, otherwise everything else is on the water. So it's really no place to put it without being, invading the environmental issues.
Thank you. Is there anything further from the board? I'll note for the record that this application is subject to chapter 81 of the code, and I'll ask the board if there's a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to grant the application type two.
Okay, again, subject to that portion of the code, the motion is by Mr. Wisdom, and I'll take the second by Mr. Mazzarella, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, let's see if we can go back to Michelle Quitrally, as she's still with us.
Mr. Chairman, I just promoted her.
All right, Michelle, so we can see you again. Now, you're still muted. Oh, thanks.
Okay.
Oh.
There we are.
You figured it out. Thank you for attending. I know that you're not local this week, but we appreciate you attending today. Let's start with getting you sworn.
Okay.
Swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but truth to help you.
I do.
All right, then, Ms. Quitrally, your appearance for the record?
Michelle Quitrally, agent for the applicant, 100 Colonial Drive, East Patchogue, New York, 11772.
All right, and what would you like to tell us about this application?
Basically, Mr. Henry Bramwell, Sr., who's the owner of the subject parcel, bought this parcel in 1954. He and his wife were the original owners. They purchased it right from the builder, raised their entire family there. The property is 65 feet wide by 110 feet in size and had an original living space of approximately 1,131 square feet in 1954. Over the years, of course, the family increased in size and they added 105 square foot kitchen addition in the back of the house that was CO'd in 1969 without needing to come before this board because code changed. We're before you today to legalize a 233 square foot garage conversion to a den with a fireplace that was converted around 200, excuse me, 2010. We're here for 109 square foot sunroom behind that garage conversion, which was constructed around 1969, a 335 square foot partial basement conversion to a family room that we believe was finished in the 1970s, and a small 54 square foot bathroom dormer on the second floor, which was added around 2010. I submitted for the record and your review the photos of the property as well as homes up and down Schoenfeld Boulevard in Patchogue. And just, this is not abnormal. There are, over the years, dormers added conversions done to the garages, making it not out of character and conforming to the surrounding properties. The improvements made have not had an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood, nor have they created a detriment to the neighbors or an impact to the surrounding parcels. With all these improvements that I had mentioned over the years, this property, this house is still under 2,000 square foot in size. So if the board has any questions?
Thank you, Ms., thank you, Ms. Quitrally. Does, does the 65-foot width of this parcel require relief from this board for the, the finishing of the basement?
Yes, that is part of the additional...
I, it wasn't part of the call of the counter. My guess is that you have a permit for that, but you required a variance for the rest of the relief requested?
Correct.
All right, so that's correct. So you don't need relief for the finished basement as a result. It's not part of the call of the counter. I just wanted to make sure that was, that was accurate because you mentioned it during your presentation.
Yes, thank you.
So the board sees that the garage was converted to a den with a fireplace and the, there is a sunroom with electric heat. Those modifications to the house didn't change the overall footprint or setbacks of the structure. Is that, are we seeing that correctly?
Yes, you are.
And the, the dormer is just for the addition of a bathroom?
Correct.
All right. Very good. That's all I have for you. Is, is there anything further from the board? Can I have a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I'd like to grant the application as presented type two.
Motion is by Mr. Cunha, seconded by Mr. Wisdom, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you, have a good afternoon.
You too.
Case number six, Arlene Harrison, care of JW Consulting, P.O. Box 674, Quorum, located on the east side of Evelyn Court, 579 feet south of Larry Court, Manorville. Applicant requests side yard variance for existing irregular deck with steps, rear yard and side yard variances for proposing ground swimming pool.
Mr. Chairman, I have John Wees for the applicant.
Thank you. I don't see Mr. Wees yet. Now we do.
No, you don't. Now you do.
Now we do, yes. Very good, Mr. Wees. Let's start by getting you sworn.
Swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but truth to help you.
I do.
Very good.
John Wees for the applicant, Post Office Box 674, Quorum, New York.
Thank you, Mr. Wees. What would you like to tell us about the application before the board?
This development was built under a cluster zoning, so therefore all of the yards and lots are substandard. The original zoning of the property at the time was A1, maintained in A1 status. So as you look at the aerials and see all of the pools in the area, if that's the aerial for my, for the property, talking about...
It's not the aerial. Mr. Wees is not the aerial. Mr. Vega is on the phone right, or he's speaking with someone right now. He'll pull it up, but you can continue.
No problem. It's just when you get to see the aerial, you'll see tremendous amount of pools in the area. All these pools are between 15 and 16 feet off the property. We're seeking the same relief that they had at the time they built them. They did not require variances because of the A1 zoning. The property for the last three years have been upzoned to A2, so that's why we're here for the variance for that. As far as the deck is concerned, again, 10-foot was the required number at the time, and now that we're at A2, we require 20 feet, and we're at 13 feet. We're behind the house line, but again, the zoning change has caused us this difficulty.
Very good. Questions from the board?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Cunha.
Hello, John, how are you?
Excellent.
Okay, let's start with the deck. The deck in the back of the house, you had said that there are other decks in the neighborhood. I'm asking you an aerial, and I do...
All the decks in, all the decks in the area were built under A1. Look at, look at the width of the property.
I see that, and I'm looking at that your deck also does not, your client's deck does not protrude past the sideline of the house. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, and your pool is holding A1 setbacks?
The proposed pool is holding A1, yes.
Now, my question to you is, is you have 25 feet to one side. If you could probably balance the pool 20 and 20 and meet at least the side yards for A2.
Let me go into, let me go into my survey.
Please correct me if I'm wrong on this.
No, that would be correct, Mr. Cunha.
To move it five foot over, we're then going to be on top of the shed. Um, so sent, so centering it based upon the A2 would not really be a good position for the pool to be located because of that. You see, we have 25 feet on one end, so if you move that over five... You see, we have 25 feet on one end, so if you move that over five foot, we're now down to 20 feet, and we're going to be within a few feet of the shed. So you're going to have a bit of a difficulty there as far as construction is concerned and as far as mobility around that pool.
Mobility, you meaning putting in a wall or a deck around the pool, is that?
Exactly.
Okay, because I'm actually trying to scale it at the moment.
It looks like about 10 feet from the shed.
It's, yeah, about, actually 15 feet.
Well, meaning if you brought it to 20 feet setback, it would be 10 feet from the shed.
Yes. You would, on the pool and everything, John?
Yeah, I mean, the proposed location is in conformity with the whole neighborhood. I mean, if the tower, if you.
I mean, this way you would be here just for a 15-foot rear yard, and that's it.
Okay, I will amend it.
All right, then, I believe the applicant's requesting an amendment to the application, which basically eliminates the request for side yard relief for proposed pools. Does the board have their motion? Motion and second have been made. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Then on the amended application, which seeks only rear yard variance for the pool and side yard for the deck with steps, is there anything further from the board?
No, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Wees, just one last question regarding the deck. The relief that you seek requests relief for an irregular deck, and this looks perfectly rectangular to me. So why is that language there?
I honestly can't answer that because the deck is existing. And it might be the way.
Did that terminology come from the building department or from yourself?
I'm going to say myself.
You can say yourself. Mr. Carty thinks it's the building department.
So do I, Mr. Chair.
Let me look up the denial.
No, we just did. We just did, John, and it says the building department used that terminology. I believe that it was error, and I hesitate to grant relief for an irregular deck that's not a regular. So I'm going to, yes, Mr. Cunha, you must have some insight here.
They might be referring to how the steps jet out in the front, and that's what they're saying is irregular because it's not just a rectangle.
Yeah.
That's kind of how they do stuff over there.
That's crazy.
I just say.
It depends on who you get at the counter. They will consider it a regular if it has.
All right, then I'll leave the issue alone, and maybe we'll speak to them about it.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. Vega.
I also have the applicant, Arlene Harrison, as a attendee.
All right, Mr. Wees, did you expect to hear from your client here?
Nope, not at all.
So I believe that I'm going to assume the individual is here just to listen and to observe unless, John, you wish that we promote the person.
I would rather not, even though there's nothing detrimental that they can do to themselves.
All right. You know what? In all fairness, since you did amend the application, do you want to hear from the client on the amendment?
Sure.
All right, I want to make sure that everyone is on the same page. So, Mr. Vega, if you can promote the applicant, please.
Mr. Chair, I believe you can speak with Ms. Harrington.
I can.
I think I'm seeing a video.
No video. All right. Is there a way to just ask Ms. Harrington before even swear her in whether she was there, she's here only to observe, or did you wish to participate? Is there a way to get a response to that question?
Ms. Harrison, can you hear us?
All right, well, at least we made an attempt. We have an amended application before us, which seeks relief for rear yard for a proposed pool and side yard for an existing deck. I'm going to ask the board if there's nothing further for a motion.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I move to grant the application as amended type two.
I'll take, that motion is by Mr. Cunha, seconded by Mr. Mazarella. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Have a nice night.
Thank you, you too.
Case number seven, Martin and Doreen Corrigan, 5 Rose Street, Miller Place. Property is located on the southwest corner, Rose Street and Parks that Avenue, Miller Place. Applicant requests rear yard variance for existing shed to be moved to property line.
Mr. Chair, I have Ralph L. Sasser for the applicant.
Very good.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Ralph L. Sasser for the applicant.
Mr. L. Sasser, I can hear you, but I don't have video yet.
I don't know why. Let's see.
Not the first time it's happened tonight, so now we see you. Very good. Let's start with having you sworn.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, I'm about to help you.
I do. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. L. Sasser, your appearance to the record.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Ralph L. Sasser for the applicants, Martin and Doreen Corrigan.
Thank you. Good to see you. I just want to note for the record that since the proposal is to move the shed to the property line, in fact, you're seeking a zero lot line for the shed. Is that correct? All right, what presentation did you have for us here?
Well, what it is basically, Mr. Chairman, is like we're barely over the lot line on this. And to move it any further than this, we're going to actually cut it back because we don't want to chance the integrity issue because it is an old shed, and they do want to keep it there, and it's been there for like 20 years, so.
Very good. Questions from the board? I believe that we have, Ms. Carty is holding up photographs of the shed.
Yes.
For the board now. I'll take questions from the board, though.
Yes, Mr. Chair, this is Charles Lazar. Can you hear me?
Thank you, Mr. Lazar, yes.
Okay. How are you, Mr. Al Sasser? Question is, if you want to move it to the lot line, why can't you move it to be in more conformance? But you're arguing that this is a very fragile shed.
Well, what it is, yeah, what it is, because where the foundation is on and everything, we're talking about moving it. We, there's a lot of other sheds that carried out a similar situation. The neighbors in the back have seen this shed for years, and there's never been an issue. And we wanted to keep it as far away from the swimming pool as possible and as far as leaving that little space open in the corner of the property.
I see what you're talking about, but I would, I would think that it can be moved, but be that as it may. One in, one point that I would like to make that bothers me is the last, the last application and this application both have site plans that have no seals on the survey, which is not a valid thing.
No what, mister?
No seal on this, on this site plan, the survey.
Oh, I have, there's seals on this survey, Mr. Lazar.
The copy I have has no seal. Okay, be that as it may, I'm finished with my questions.
Okay, but there is a seal on them. I can provide one to the board. Okay.
I'll let you, I will tell you that it's an embossed seal, which the copy filed with the Appeals Office had. This allows you, obviously, we copied it to send to you, and yours does not have that embossed seal.
I have no further questions.
Thank you, Mr. Lazar. Is there anything further, Mr. L. Sasser?
Nothing from me, Mr. Chairman.
Does the board have a motion?
Grant the application type two.
Motion is by Mr. Lazar to grant this a type two action, seconded by Mr. Cunha. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board.
Case number eight, Anthony Us, care of Wood Hall Expediting, 1031 Main Street, Port Jefferson. Property is located on the south side of Berkeley Avenue, 790 feet east of Linwood Street, Selden. Applicant requests side yard variances for existing shed, existing second-story deck and existing platform under said deck. Also, minimum and total side yard variances for existing roof over deck.
Mr. Chairman, I have Amy DeVito for the applicant.
We have, hi, we have Mr. DeVito with us already. Then we'll have you sworn, Mr. DeVito.
I swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, I'm about to help you.
I do.
Very good. Good to see you. What would you like to tell us about this application?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, the applicant is currently legalizing his roof over deck and shed. He has owned the home since 1962, and both the shed and the deck with roof over were erected in approximately 1985. The neighborhood is comprised of small lots, all of which are less than a quarter of an acre, which does not leave much room for placement of accessory structures. As such, the applicant placed the shed and roof over deck in their current location to maximize the use of their rear yard. Additionally, the yard faces south and the roof over provides much-needed shaded space. It should be noted that the house itself does not meet the current required zoning setbacks. In reviewing aerials of the neighborhood, it is clear that side yard encroachments are common in the area. Additionally, I have submitted photos to the board showing homes in the neighborhood with similar encroachments, some of which are located on the same street. And I've also provided some similar grants as well, all of which were emailed to Ms. Richardi on Monday. And I'm happy to answer any questions the board may have.
Thank you. You did mention in your presentation the roofed over deck and the shed. I didn't hear anything about the second-story deck.
So the roof over is actually on, above the, the east side of the second-story deck. If you look at the survey, the deck is actually L-shaped.
So the roof over is the structure that is the deck above?
That's correct. The roof over is only over the east side of the deck, though.
Very good. All right. We are, Ms. Carty is displaying a photograph of it now. I'll ask the board if, are there any questions?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, was it Mr. Mazarella or Mr. Burksen? Sorry.
Amy.
Mr. Burksen.
The, this roof over deck and the side yard has been there since when?
1985.
And has it been used as a second-story deck since then?
Yes.
Is there specific contact or input from the neighbor to the east?
No, we haven't received any phone calls with any question at all, and I'm not sure if anybody's here to speak, but we haven't received any correspondence.
So the aerial that I saw did not, it might have been an older one, but it did, doesn't appear to show, well, the aerial doesn't really show a lot of similar two-story structures in the side yard that close to the property line.
Well, I don't know.
Are there others, are there others that are in the area? Not just one story, but here you have a second-story deck.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know that any of them are, you know, quite as close as the, you know, near three, just over, you know, 2.7 feet that we particularly have. But if you look at the aerials, even the house directly behind it, there's an encroachment, not as close, but definitely close. All these lots are comprised of, you know, the same exact square footage, more or less. And actually, if, I sent these to Ms. Richardi, so I'm going to just lift these up to, you know, to the screen to show you. But this is 13 Berkeley Avenue. This is also very close. I don't know if you could see that. Okay, so that's a second-story deck, very close to the side property line. And then this is, excuse me, 19 Strauss Avenue, which is just around the block, also a second-story deck. Doesn't have a roof over, but it's kind of small, but if you could see that there. So these are all in the immediate neighborhood.
And you say since 1985 and no input from the neighbor on the application?
No, none at all.
Okay. Thank you. How are you feeling?
I feel okay. I was, yeah, I'm okay.
I have nothing further.
Thank you, Mr. Burksen. Is there anything further from the board on the application? Mr. Vega, do we have any speakers on the application?
Mr. Chairman, we do not have any speakers. Nobody's raised their hand, but there are a number of people in the attendees list who have not specified, in which case they're here to speak on.
I do see that. Just with regard to this application, Mr. Burksen followed with some questions concerning that deck. Based upon the survey, I'm unable to determine, does the, does the deck extend to the property line or is it the, or is it to have some setback?
Okay, so I'll show you a photo, which will clarify it. The second-story deck holds a setback of 2.7 feet along with the roof over. The.
Is this a true, Mr. Carty is giving me the photographs that you submitted. Is this a two, two-story or is it a high ranch? What do we, what kind of?
It's more like a one and a half. So it is a high ranch, so it's not a true two-story with two-story height in the rear. So it's more like one and a half. There is a wood platform deck underneath the second-story deck that goes right to the property line, but that is completely flush to the ground. And I'm sure you have the photo there that.
Yeah, I'm seeing that now. It looks as though the deck is about 10 feet from grade. Is that, is that close to what you're seeing?
Probably not even 10 feet. I was actually under that deck, and it didn't seem like it was, you know, five feet above me. It's probably a little lower than that.
We see it has access to the backyard, to the cement patio, but what are we accessing off of the deck in this dwelling?
That is the dining room, if I remember correctly.
And then when it, in the L shape, when it goes around the side of the house where the roof over area is, what access, what are we accessing there?
There is no access. That's actually just an air conditioner in a window, no door. I'm sorry, air conditioner in the wall, no door. You could see that. You could see that here. I don't know how well you could see that. This was a photo submitted to.
Very good. And, Mr. Vega, do we have an aerial for this, for this parcel? I'm trying to get a sense of, all right, so that the, the deck area would be toward the lot on the corner. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
All right. And I know that Mr. Burksen asked you, but what was your response when he said, was there any discussion with that neighbor concerning the deck?
We didn't have any discussion with the neighbor at all. He did not approach the homeowner with any questions or concerns, and I did not personally receive any phone calls in response to my notice letter.
All right. All right, and is it the applicant's intention to sell the house now or just to get everything in order?
So the applicant, at this point, you know, he's owned the home since 1962. He doesn't have immediate plans to sell, but expressed that he would like to get everything in order so that it's, it's ready for when he does eventually want to sell. He's a disabled veteran retired.
I do see that, and I'm actually impressed with the last name USS, but I wondered whether or not the purpose of that deck was to, because of his disabled condition, allow access for him outside of the dwelling. Is that why the structure was built?
Yes, well, he is mobile, but yes, it was for the convenience of him being able to enjoy his backyard, you know, from his main level of the house and as well as creating shade because that house, the rear of the house does face south. So when you sit on that back deck, you're in full sun, so they created the roof over area for shade, you know, purposes of shading and areas that they can enjoy.
All right, I thank you for answering those questions. Is there anything further from the board? Does the board have a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the application submitted type two.
Motion by Mr. Burksen, seconded by, and I didn't, I don't know who it looks like, Mr. Wisdom. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Before Ms. Carty reads the next case, I just want to point out what Mr. Vega just mentioned. Now, there's a number of persons sitting on the attendee list who have not identified themselves with a case number. Obviously, we have no way of determining what case you're here to speak on. And as a result, I would request, please, that you rename yourself utilizing the case number that you wish to speak on. That being said, we'll move to the next case.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Case number nine, Bruce and Ellen Morrison, care of Andrew Malguanera, 713 Main Street, Port Jefferson, located on the east side of Bicycle Path, 97 feet south of Ormond Avenue, Selden. Applicant requests minimum and total side yard variances for existing one-story residence addition. Front yard setback variance for existing 10-foot by 10-foot porch. Side yard variance for existing detached garage located in the required side yard, side yard variance for existing shed.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Vega.
I have Andrew Malguinera for the applicant. I also have the applicant Bruce Morrison.
All right. I would promote them both, please. Mr. Malguinera, are you there already? We can see you. Can you give us a little bit of audio so we could determine whether we can hear you?
Hello?
Andrew. Very good. Your client appears to be an attendee also. We're promoting them. I assume that, like in many other cases, they wish to just observe. But if you'd like, if there's anything different, you will let us know.
Sure.
All right, let's just start by having you sworn.
I'll just truth, the whole truth, I'm about to help you.
Andrew Malguinera, 713 Main Street, agent for the applicant.
Andrew, I didn't hear yes to that question.
Yes.
Okay, very good. And we have your appearance. What would you like to tell us about this application?
All right, so we have a couple of things going on here. So first and foremost, the detached garage was here when my client purchased the property. It's been there at least 30 years now. He was under the impression it was legal. It was on a survey that town actually had on file from when they pulled the records. And for some reason, it never made it to a permit or CO. So we are here to legalize that. But it's not abnormal with the area. Both 15 and 19 South Bicycle both have similar detached garages. And it's perfectly normal for the areas. As far as the front roof over goes, it's been there since 1988 and as well as the addition. Both only add value to the neighborhood. They're very well maintained. And if you have any questions, please let me know.
Thank you. Questions from the board?
Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Mazel.
Andrew, how are you?
Good. How are you doing?
Pretty good. So you said the, the detached garage was, had already been constructed upon.
Purchase, right. The, our, my client didn't even know it was, it was not legal. But upon legalizing the addition and the roof over, the garage came up as well, so we had to address it.
Okay, so the roof over and addition was done by the current owner?
Correct.
You said that was about 1988?
Correct.
And that addition holds what as far as type of living space?
It's additional living area, dining room, I believe. Just, no, just legalizing the dining room and living room.
Dining and living, that's the upstairs space on that, on that addition?
It's the first story. The additions are first.
It's not.
Yeah, it's just the first story. Right.
Bump out. Okay. And, and then you got the porch. It's 10 by 10.
Right.
And any questions or issues at all from the neighbors?
No issues that I'm aware of.
No further questions, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Mazel. Is there anything further from the board on the application? If not, I'll take a motion.
Like to grant the application as submitted type two.
Motion is by Mr. Mazel, a second by Mr. Wisdom, all in favor. Sorry, that was Mr. Lazaru for the record that seconded. All in favor? Opposed, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Case number 10, Gina White, Linda Cottone, and Harry Martin, care of Andrew Malguinera, located on the east side of Broadway Avenue, 133 feet north of Long Island Avenue. Holtsville. Applicant requests side yard variances for existing above-ground swimming pool and pool deck.
Mr. Malguinera, I think you're still here. You're muted now, though. If you can unmute yourself, please. Very good. You've previously been sworn. Just give us your appearance for this application and then tell us what you'd like us to know about the pool.
Andrew Malguinera for the applicant.
And Andrew, you have a side yard request for a pool and a pool deck. What would you like to tell us?
My client's trying to sell the house and trying to legalize everything in the pool. She wasn't aware because it's above ground, needed a permit. It was built after 2007. It's been about five years ago. No adverse effect on the neighborhood. And we feel granted this variance would be, wouldn't be a problem. If you have any questions, please let me know.
All right. And just clarify for the board, this is, is it an A1 parcel?
It is.
The setback requirement is 15.
Correct, correct.
All right, thank you. Questions from the board?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Wisdom.
So Andrew, Andrew, this is a 18 by 34-foot above-ground pool?
Correct.
And it's been there for how, how long did you say that was there?
Five years.
Five years. And you're holding a 14, I should say, a 9.4 and 6.4?
Correct. It's, it was put directly in the middle. It's a thin property, as you can see.
I can see that. Are there any other pools in the neighborhood that are similar? I could see one.
Right, there are other above-ground pools, similar in nature.
I see that right down there. I think Lori's looking at that now.
Right.
And I do see a few more pools that are in the backyards. So you're saying it conforms to the neighborhood?
Yes.
I have nothing further.
Thank you. Is there anything further from the board? Andrew, the, the side yard request on the deck is only for the side yard where there's 14 feet showing, not the, not the 17 feet. Is that correct?
Show me what you're talking about.
Yeah, the.
Oh, for the, oh, for the deck.
Pool deck. Yeah, you're holding 17 on one side, so it's only that side?
Yes, yes.
If there's nothing further from the board, I'll ask for a motion.
Chief, I'll make a motion to grant the application type two.
Motion is by Mr. Wisdom. Seconded by, seconded by Mr. Mazel, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Case number 11, Scott and Dina Walker, 183 Southern Boulevard, Patchogue, located on the south side, located on the east side of Southern Boulevard, 621 feet south of Spruce Drive, Patchogue. Applicant requests rear yard and side yard variances for existing shed. Side yard variance for existing generator located in the required side yard.
Mr. Chair, I have Ralph Alsasser for the applicant.
Very good. Andy, can we move to, very good, you're doing that right now, the survey for number 11. Mr. Alsasser, you've previously been sworn. Just give us your appearance and let us know which one.
Ralph Alsasser for the applicant, Mr. and Mrs. Scott Walker.
Thank you. What would you like to tell us here?
Mr. Chairman, we're here for the rear yard shed. It's there approximately five years old. We also have a generator, which is on the side of the property with 16 feet from the property line. And that's also been there for probably five to six years, Alsasser.
Thank you. Questions from the board?
Mr. Chair, I believe that's yours.
Thank you. I was wondering myself. With regard to the shed, Mr. Alsasser, I see that it's Madison size and it is holding some setback. Your survey showing us five feet?
Yes.
Is that, is that a setback in a condition common to this area?
Oh, it's quite common in the area, Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Ricciardi is showing us photographs. Is that a photograph of, well, I'm not sure enough. Are you seeing that also? Is that a photograph of the shed?
The blue one? Yes.
All right. Are those shed doors? Those are two separate doors that open up together?
Yeah, they both open up and it was just the way that the shed was actually made. It was one of the ones that was basically dropped there, you know?
And do your photographs include the interior of the shed?
Mr. Chairman, I did not, because the day I went over there to take the pictures, the shed was locked. But I've been to this home many, many times, because we have other issues that we're taking care. We got permits for other things. And then next thing you know, when the shed came up and it was missed the first time, that's why we're here. So all you have in there is basically pool equipment, patio furniture and so forth. And I've been asked, unfortunately, I apologize, I don't have them for the board today.
The relief for the generator is what? Is it because it's in the side yard or is it because of the setback you're proposing?
Yeah, it's, it's in a setback. I guess it's supposed to be, could be 20, 25 feet. It's 16 feet. It's a small generator. And to be honest with you, it hasn't been used in years. So that's how long it's been there.
All right. Well, we do see that it was brought as close to the house as possible. That's not a very common thing. Most people would like to send it to their neighbor's property line so that they can hear it and not them. So we are impressed with that. We do see it's in the side yard. You are asking for nine feet.
They're great people and they're good neighbors too, you know? So I'm sure he took that into consideration when it was put in.
All right. Is there anything further from the board on the application? Does the board have a motion? Motion is by Mr. Wisdom. I'll take the second by Mr. Cunha, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Case number 13, Kevin and Christine Peterson, 37 University Drive, St. Torket. Property is located on the west side, excuse me, University Drive, 617 feet south of Daniel Webster Drive, St. Torket. Applicant requests rear yard variance for proposed one-story residence addition.
Mr. Chair, I have a Sam Reynoso for the applicant. Also, Mr. Chair, I wanted to inform you that I did not receive their, any of their affidavits or mailings. They were supposed to drop them off today. But I have not received them as of yet. You are mute, Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Vega, can I ask, did you inquire as to the, as to the reason for the attendance of the Senator's office?
I have not.
Can you determine that for us during this presentation? All right, let me see. Do we have the applicant here? I heard someone say hello.
Yes, Sam Reynoso, BMR Interiors for Mr. and Mrs. Peterson.
Yes, Mr. Reynoso, I'm not seeing your, your video. So do you have the video turned up? You're coming up now. Very good. We can see you in here. Thank you very much. Let me ask you to give your attention to the board's attorney to re-s sworn, please.
Yes, sir.
All right, then we'll start with your appearance, please.
Sam Reynoso with the BMR Interiors, 357 Horse Blank Road in Farmingville, New York.
Very good. The board is familiar with the application. We see that you are here for a rear yard setback variance for a one-story addition proposed to the dwelling. Why don't you tell us a little bit about that?
It's a property that basically there's no one around per se. It's, the house is not situated, it's at an angle, 45 degrees. So therefore, it falls under a full setback. So it's just a small addition of about 200 square feet, 26 by 10 to the back of the house, to just expand one of the rooms. It's not, there's no one behind it. And on the right side of the house, there's a stockade fence, so it wouldn't interfere with anybody's view or anything to that effect. And otherwise, it's pretty much straightforward, just a small addition to the rear of the house, one single floor.
All right, thank you, sir. Questions from the board?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Cunha.
Good afternoon, sir. Quite well, thank you. And you're maintaining all the, all the setbacks for the, for the zoning of the parcels?
Yes, sir. Everything is, like I said, because of the, how the house was originally built as an angle, it falls under a rear setback. So that's all in compliance.
All right, thank you. And what is the room being used for?
It's just expanding one of the family rooms. It's expanding. And if you notice to the right of the addition, there's where the chimney, so that structurally wasn't going to be touched. It's just making that room a little bit, little bit bigger. It's a total, it's a total of 260 square feet, I think it is. 221, 221 square feet.
I see, because the other part nearest to the chimney is actually only eight feet, not 10. Okay, no further questions.
Thank you, Mr. Cunha. And Mr. Reynoso, that setback proposed is 30 feet, 6 inches?
Yes, sir.
Very good. Is there anything further from the board? Does the board have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to grant the application as presented type two.
Motion by Mr. Cunha, seconded by Mr. Wisdom, all in favor? Any opposed? Yes, Mr. Vega.
This case number 13 is the only case that I have not received, the receipts.
You reminded me. Thank you very much. Mr. Reynoso, talk to us about your notice, Bruce.
They were delivered. It was an error on my part. They weren't delivered today, unfortunately, a little bit, but you do have them. I did personally deliver them today, the original copies of everything that was. I do have copies if necessary.
All right, what I'd like you to do is, I'd like you to contact the Board of Appeals Office, the office itself.
The, excuse me, one of the staff members just came up here. An envelope was delivered. We, I haven't had a chance to look in it to check to see if it's correct.
All right. So we will, we will review that tomorrow during business hours. And, and if there's any issue, we will contact you. If there's not, we will release the grant letter with, with the balance of them when they, when they are prepared to go out.
Yeah, it was an error on my part, just because of travel. So I would have had it yesterday.
Thank you. I believe I have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you, folks. Good afternoon.
Case number 14, Christopher King, 145 Jamaica Avenue, Medford, located on the northwest corner of Jamaica Avenue and Syracuse Avenue, Medford. Applicant requests front yard setback variance from Syracuse Avenue for existing second story deck with stairs, existing shed and for existing above-ground swimming pool, all located in the front yard, Syracuse Avenue.
Mr. Chair, I have a Larry Buscemi for the applicant.
Thank you. Mr. Buscemi, we can see you and we can hear you. Very good. Let me ask you to give your attention to the board attorney to re-s sworn.
I do.
Very good. Let's just start with your appearance and then your presentation.
Larry Buscemi, 15 Vineyard Way, Mount Sinai, New York, for the applicant, Christopher King.
Very good. What would you like to tell us?
Mr. Chairman, this is a application for three structures, a pool, above-ground pool, I should say, a shed and a deck, all of which are in the required front yard. But it's a secondary front yard along Syracuse Avenue in Medford. The deck itself holds about a 30-foot setback from the street. The shed holds 10 feet seven and the pool 20 feet six. They're not visible from either street, actually. Their tract of structures are in character and keeping with the neighborhood. If you can see, if you see the aerials. And they should be granted.
Thank you. Questions in the board?
Yes, Mr. Chair, this is Charles Lazaru.
Yes, Mr. Lazaru.
Mr. Buscemi, the dimension, although you, I think you said orally, was 30 feet from the Syracuse Avenue set, street to the second floor deck?
Yes.
Right, and that would be projected down to the ground, and that was 30 feet?
30 feet.
30 feet. Also, just looking at the configuration, the PVC fence comes in, and I guess it goes under the second story deck?
It does.
Okay. Now, there's also a stair indication to the second floor deck. Is that to gain entrance to it or to exit it or what?
That's, yes, it's for egress and ingress.
Okay, goes to the second floor. Is there a separate apartment up there?
Absolutely not.
No, it's all the one.
It's in the main floor of the house.
Okay.
Which it comes off of.
Absolutely. The shed is there how long or?
Shed's been there for about 10 years.
10 years. And the above-ground pool?
About the same.
About the same time?
Yeah.
Okay. I have no further questions, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Lazaru. Is there anything further from the board? Does the board have a motion?
Grant the application type two.
Second.
A motion is by Mr. Lazaru, seconded by Mr. Mazel, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, members. I'll see you in a bit.
Thank you. Well, members, I am hearing a good amount of background noise. If we could just mute ourselves when not speaking, it would help.
Case 15, Kurt Kaufman, 23 Wilson Avenue, Selden, located on the east side of Wilson Avenue, 175 feet north of Hall Street, Selden. Applicant requests rear yard variance for proposed second-story residence addition. Rear yard and side yard variances for existing in-ground swimming pool.
Mr. Chair, Ralph Alsasser for the applicant.
Thank you. While waiting for Mr. Alsasser to be promoted, I will note that there is a message for Ms. Reynolds. I will note that there is a message for Ms. Reynolds in the, in the chat feature of Zoom. We'd ask that you respond to that question for us.
Mr. Chairman, can you hear me?
Yes, Mr. Elsasser, you're back. I'm not seeing you, but I'm hearing you again. Just a little bit of delay in the video this, this time around. I expect to see you soon, and there you are. Okay, you've been, you've been sworn. Let's start with your appearance and your presentation.
Chairman Ralph Elsasser for the applicant, Mr. Kurt Kaufman.
Thank you, Mr. Elsasser. What would you like to tell us?
Mr. Chairman, we're here for a proposed second-story addition, which leaves a thirty-eight point two rear yard, which sixty foot is required. It's six foot by twenty-three feet. The proposed addition is going to encompass a hallway, a closet, and a bathroom. We're also here, Mr. Chairman, for the in-ground swimming pool, which is ten point nine feet rear yard and ten point five feet side yard. And that is existing.
Thank you. Questions from the board?
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry.
No problem, Mr. Berks.
Hi, Ralph. So how long, the pool's been there for how long?
Mr. Berks, and I couldn't get me an exact time, but I could tell you was, it was after two thousand and three. John, who works with me, did the application. I was looking for it on here, but I was looking at it all the survey, and it wasn't on there then. So I can tell you, it's definitely after that. I don't want to just.
Are there other pools with similar side yards? I mean, it is a little over ten feet. It's not something we haven't granted before.
You've got in-ground and above-ground pools and side yards in this area, Mr. Berks.
What's the additional second story for?
Well, the second story is for, as explained, is a hallway, is going to be a closet and a bathroom. And it's basically six feet by twenty-three, two.
You see, that is, is essentially the rear yard, even though there's Hall Street on, is it a corner lot? No, it's not. The, it's essentially in the rear yard, is that right?
It's in the rear yard, yeah. You know, it's.
And you'd still be holding about thirty-eight feet?
Thirty-eight, yeah. You know what it is. It's an A1 where sixty is required. We didn't have sixty to begin with, so we're basically six feet, we're asking for six feet more. That's what we're getting, so.
Okay, I see. And no input from any of the neighbors, I assume?
None that we're aware of, Mr. Berks.
Well, okay. I have nothing further.
Thank you, Mr. Berks. And is there anything further from the board? Does the board have a motion?
Chairman, I move to grant the application as submitted type two.
A motion is by Mr. Berks, second by Mr. Wisdom. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the board, have a good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Elsasser.
Case number sixteen, RDC Properties, seven seventy-nine Horse Block Road, Farmingville. Properties located on the west side of Eleventh Avenue, not open, three hundred feet north of Masonic Avenue, Holtsville. Applicant requests relief from Town Law two eighty-eight for proposed one-family dwelling.
Mr. Chair, I recuse.
The record will reflect that Mr. Cunha is recused from the application.
Mr. Chair, I have Diane Moje for the applicant.
Thank you, Mr. Vega.
I also have a Ronald Kennicki. Kennicki in the queue. I'm not sure if he's here to speak or, or if he's with Ms. Moje.
Give me a moment on that. Yes, Ronald, that would be one of the neighbors, one fifty-four Eleventh Avenue. So we'll take, we'll take him as a speaker once Ms. Moje is done with her presentation. Good afternoon, Diane. We're going to have you sworn. I think that we have Mr. Doyle here.
I do.
Yes, I do.
Thank you, Ms. Moje. Your appearance for the record, please.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Diane Moje, DNI Expediting Services with offices located at seven seventy-nine Horse Block Road in Farmingville. Mr. Chairman, I believe you have a report from Mr. Reed on this, if you want to proceed with that, and then we can proceed with the application.
Yes, we do. For the purpose of the record, it should reflect that this application was reviewed by the board's planner, Christopher Reed, who is here to testify about the content of his report that was prepared and dated August ten, two thousand and twenty. We'll start by having Mr. Reed sworn.
John? Need to be sworn.
I do.
Property is located on the west side of Eleventh Avenue, three hundred feet north of Masonic Avenue in the ham of Holtsville. And the applicant proposes to erect a two-story dwelling on the ten thousand square foot parcel with access intended via Eleventh Avenue, which is not improved at the subject parcel. And the property is located within the A1 Residence District. And while the lot does not conform to the bulk requirements of the underlying zoning, the parcel was determined to be single and separate and exempt from said requirements. The town zoning enforcement officer has opined that relief of Town Law two eighty-eight is required in that the lot is intended to be accessed by a driveway in the paper street and not via a public road constructed to requisite town standards. Town Law two eighty-eight is the ordinance for permits for structures not on improved map streets and states that no permit for the erection of any building shall be issued unless a street or highway giving access to such proposed structure is on an existing state, county, or town highway. The board should be cognizant that this is a buildable lot, and the only issue before the board is access, whether it will be served by a driveway or road. Staff notes that while Eleventh Avenue terminates at the subject property on the north side and approximately one hundred and twenty-five feet to the south, a connection of said roads do not appear to be warranted and that there do not appear to be developable lots between both terminus of the street. And there is only two homes which currently enjoy access on Eleventh Avenue, south of Ridgewood Avenue. The lack of the intent for the connection is further evident by the fact that number one fifty-four Eleventh Avenue appears to have been constructed only partially the length of the lot, where it is customary to build same the entire length of the parcel. As such, the only pertinent issue with the subject application is whether a turnaround mechanism is warranted here. It is noted that there is a Highway Work Permit, six two two one five, on file with the Highway Division, wherein highway is desirous of a road improvement plan with a cul-de-sac and wherein a sketch plan was submitted, revealing same along with a side entry garage to accomplish same. And the application is a type-two action, and should the board look favorably on the relief of Town Law two eighty-eight, the following covenant is recommended that it be subject to the execution and filing in the office of the County Clerk of Covenants and Restrictions that the owner of the subject parcel, their successors, heirs, and/or assigned, shall control, use, and/or maintain the driveway within the area of the Eleventh Avenue right-of-way as depicted on the survey prepared by Smith, Jung, and Gillis, last revised on February fifteen, two thousand and twenty, and hold the town of Brookhaven and its assigns harmless from any claims whatsoever arising out of their control, use, and/or maintenance of the aforementioned right-of-way.
For the record, then, those, that is a testimony of the board's planner, Christopher Reed. Ms. Moje, what did you have for us here?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, the subject premises is stated by Mr. Reed. It's on Eleventh Avenue, is, and the roadway and just at the edge of the subject premises property. Property is held in single and separate. It is a buildable parcel. It is, in fact, as Mr. Reed said, the last lot on the road that could be developed. Every other lot that would be accessed through Eleventh Avenue is already improved. There's only two other homes that use Eleventh Avenue, I guess he said, south for the north to access the road. You can see the other homes. They run through lots. They face Tenth Avenue. The reason that we're here before the board asking for the two eighty-eight is after going through the process and trying to permit this lot and dealing with the Highway Department, they've requested a, a turnaround for the improvement of the road in front of this parcel. Since this is, in fact, the last parcel, whenever you extend the road, and I, and I had a case similar to this a few weeks ago, the water authority has you extend the main, which adds a tremendous amount of cost, not only to mention the amount of cost for a turnaround. So just to go over those numbers with you, just so you're aware, the road with the turnaround with drainage and curb would run the applicant approximately forty thousand dollars. In addition to that, they would have to extend the water main, and they've gotten a cost of approximately twenty thousand dollars. So you're talking about approximately sixty thousand dollars to improve one home on a road that isn't going to serve any purpose to anybody else. The turnaround that they're requesting is not a full turnaround, so really would not accommodate any emergency apparatus, if that's the argument, because the size of the cul-de-sac is close to about forty feet, where a regular-sized cul-de-sac to accommodate emergency apparatus is approximately a hundred feet. So if they did a full-size turnaround at the end of this, you're talking about having a cul-de-sac almost up to the front door of the proposed residence. So it's for those reasons that we're before the board seeking permission to build a driveway into the property. As you can see by the survey, the house is laid out so that the garage is closest to the edge of pavement. There would not be a very large driveway, and we can run a water line from the end of the road into the home if it's done this way. So I believe that the granting of this application in this manner would not create any detriment to the surrounding area, nor would it impair the values thereof. If the board has any questions, I'd be happy to address them.
Thank you, Ms. Moje. Questions from the board?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Mazarella.
Hey, Diane.
Hi, how are you?
Good, yourself?
Very well, thanks.
Yeah, I do remember the case you had. I think the only difference was in that other one, that access was running along someone else's property line, where here you're not.
Correct.
Worried about that. The, the access going to be gravel, or I see something on here that says concrete, but I don't.
It would be asphalt driveway. So it would run the driveway from the edge of pavement into the property.
Okay. The asphalt would begin where the road ends, is that what you're saying?
And we'd have to do an apron, I guess, at that point, you know, we'd have to do something.
Right.
Really doesn't make any sense to build a full turnaround to develop one house. There's not going to be future development in this area. This area is historic for having a lot of dead ends. It's not uncommon. It's in keeping with the nature and character of the surrounding area.
I would agree. After you gave us the data on the cost of the water and the turnaround, that it would not be practical for someone to actually put a dwelling here to start.
It's counterproductive.
The, the area to the south of the property, is that a, is that a sump back there, or?
There is, in fact, just give me a second. I have the aerial up here. On the next block on Tenth Avenue, there is a sump, but not on the subject prem, not on the lot. The parcel directly to the south is a through lot. They have a swimming pool. And then to the north is a, is a residence.
Okay, I got, I'm getting confused. So, so that, that's a swimming pool from, from one fifty-nine? Okay.
Yeah, that, well, that one fronts on Ninth Avenue.
It looks like it's twelve.
The backyard is next to the subject premises.
Right, okay.
Because those are through lots over there.
Okay, I see that. Okay, I don't have any other questions. I would, I would look forward to hearing from, from the, I guess it's the neighbor at one fifty-four. Is that who we have in, standing by, or?
Yes, I, I believe so, Mr. Mazarella.
Thanks, Diane.
All right, thank you. Is there anything further from the board at this point? All right, then, if we can promote.
Mr. Chair, we actually have two speakers on this, Jim Barton's.
Well, we've been them both.
And we're bringing them both up at once.
All right, sir. Why, see, is it Ronald? How do you pronounce your last name?
Ronald Kernke.
Ronald Kernke. Yes, thank you very much for waiting to be heard. Is one of the person we're waiting to bring you up with, so that I can bring you up together, just bear with us a moment.
Okay.
And Mr. Barton's, we can see you. Can you hear us?
Yes.
All right, gentlemen, if you could both give your attention, please, to the board's attorney, John Doyle. He will swear you in.
I swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but truth will help you.
Yes. Yes.
Okay, gentlemen, Mr., is it Kernke? What would you, why don't you start with your name and address?
My name is Ronald Kernke. I live at one fifty-four Eleventh Avenue. That is just south of the location that they're planning on building the property.
Yes. And sir, obviously, you live on this block. You have, you have certain observations that this board wouldn't have. What would you like to tell us?
Um, I was just curious, because the notice that I received didn't give any indication on how they were going to gain access to the property. I had looked it up and noticed that it was permission to build on a lot that didn't have road access. So I was, the only reason I'm here is because I was curious to know were they going to do away with the dead-end street that I am so happy with in front of my house? But it seems that they're not going to make it connect, and so I have no issues with that. I do have a question. Is he allowed to put a driveway on property he does not own?
Well, that, that is the request for relief to the board, the request for, for relief from section two eighty-eight of the code basically would permit a private driveway from the terminus of that road where it is presently to this parcel. So if, if, if this board moved favorably, that would be what the applicant would be seeking permission for, as, as opposed to continuing it with a cul-de-sac in front of the, in front of the parcel that the applicant owns. All right, talk to us about your side. It looks as though Eleventh Avenue also terminates right in front of your house.
Yes, that is correct.
And is that, is that a terminus such, similar to the Eleventh Avenue on the other side? Is there, is there, was there a cul-de-sac put in? What's the, it looks like the road just ends there. Is that correct?
On my side, right in front of my driveway, there's actually a barricade. It's a white wooden barricade that I.
We see that in the aerial.
Yeah.
And your driveway goes, is, it basically ends at your driveway?
My driveway is maybe a foot and a half from the barricade.
All right, very good. Well, we thank you very much for, for coming out and participating in this virtual hearing, sir. Let's hear from Mr. Barton. Sir, you've been sworn. Let's start with your name and address, please.
It's Jim Barton's. I actually live at one seventy-two Eleventh Avenue, if you see it on the aerial there.
Yes, that'd be first house on the right on Eleventh Avenue, right? I mean, you're not the corner lot. You're the one next, the one next door.
Correct. I had just the same curiosity as Mr. Kernke, to wondering if it was going to be a straight, street that was going to be built. The notice really didn't provide too much, but I, I'm pleased that it's going to remain a dead end at this point.
Thank you, Mr. Barton. Yes, that is what's being proposed to the board. The planner noted in his report that there are only two houses that access Eleventh Avenue. And that would be, was it your home and your neighbor at one sixty-eight? Is that correct?
That is correct.
Because all of the houses have frontage on either Ridgewood or Tenth.
That is.
Tenth Avenue. All right. Thank you very much. Is there, is there anything else you want to tell us?
Uh, no, thank you.
Questions or comments from board members? All right, then, Ms. Moje, we, we have heard from the neighbors. They seem to be in agreement with, with the applicant in that the road should not be. Questions or comments from board members? All right, then Ms. Moshe, uh, we we have heard from the neighbors. They seem to be in agreement with um, with the applicant and in that the road should not be. Uh, extended through and the only act, uh, question before the board obviously is uh, is uh the request for 280A access or the uh cul-de-sac like. Feature that the highway department is asking for. So what final comments did you have for the board?
Um, just to take into consideration that we are building one home here, that um $60,000 improvement uh to the roadway is um, is exorbitant for the building of one home. In this price point of this area. Um, and um, it's not really going to serve the purpose that everybody thinks that it would with a turnaround. To keep in mind that an actual cul-de-sac, a full cul-de-sac is actually much larger and it's not going to accomplish. The common sense thought of that it would be able to accommodate um emergency apparatus. They would still have to turn around. So it's it's not really, it it's a lot of money to be spent to, for very little gain, so.
Thank you. Is there anything further from the board? All right, I don't hear anything. Does the board have a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to grant the application uh with the uh relief from the 280A. And I think we have to add in there the covenants uh stated from uh Mr. Reed.
Yeah, so it's 280, the grant is as presented as a type 2 action uh with the subject to the execution and filing of the covenant mentioned uh in Mr. Reed's testimony. Ms. Ricordi will make that part of the the uh, the board's decision on the application. That motion is by Mr. Mazzarella. I will uh ask for a second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Burksen. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Have a nice evening.
Thank you.
Case number 17, Jean-Claude Blazy, care of Christine Nicole. Properties located on the south side of Trafalgar Drive, 650 feet west of Pine Tree Drive, Shirley. Applicant requests side yard variance for proposed deck with steps.
Mr. Chair, I have a Christina call for the applicant.
Thank you.
I also have, I believe, is the actual applicant, Jean-Claude Blazy, but only stated as Blazy. Thank you.
Mr. Cold, we, you're with us again. I don't, you need to unmute yourself.
Unmute.
Very good. Yes, you did it. So it appears as though we have the applicant with us.
Yeah, he doesn't need to speak. I think he just was concerned.
Wanted to observe? Okay, if that changes, you'll let us know. With regard to this application, though, you've previously been sworn. Can we just have your appearance for the record, please?
Sure, it's Christine Nicole with offices at 18 Railroad Avenue, Santa Maria Riches. Um, the Blazys want to add a 16 by 16, one-story deck, and the deck is going to be even with the side of the house. So realize that the house itself is at the same uh location as where the deck will be. It's not going any closer except for a few steps, which we're allowed to have. So it does meet the seven foot nine, 7.9 foot side yard that is required with that the house enjoys, and now we're asking that for the uh deck also. I would also like to point out, if you look at the photographs, you can't tell where the property line changes because Mr. Blazy does own the lot next door, which is a single and separate lot. You know, but he's has it vacant. He's enjoying it vacant for now. So it's really not affecting any neighbors except for himself. And again, even if it was a house there, it's in line with the house, and it is a one-story deck. It's not a second-story deck. So we're off by about two, 2.3 inches uh what we supposed to have. No, I'm sorry, we're supposed to have 10 feet. Yeah, 10 feet we're supposed to have, and we're going to have 7.9. If the board has any questions?
Thank you. Do I understand it to be, is it 6.9? And you're here for side yard basically because you have a set of steps running on that side, is it?
No, I'm here for the deck itself. They didn't deny me for the six point. I put that down on there that what, that it's 6.9 with the steps. But they denied me at 7.9 because they said I was allowed to have an encroachment with steps. So I just went along with that.
They denied you for the setback of the existing house. Okay.
The deck, yes, the deck. And they said I was allowed to have an encroachment on that side yard with steps. I did put down 6 foot 9, but they denied me at 7.9.
Very good. Questions from the board? James, this might be you. You just need to unmute yourself. Very good.
Okay, I didn't see that.
No problem.
Christine.
Yes.
So you're going to be holding that 6.9 on the uh, on that side, that side yard?
Yes.
And what, just tell me what it's going to be used for?
It's just going to be an entrance to the house in the back, a deck. They had concrete. Now they just would like a deck back there.
Okay, so you're going to put a deck on on the one-story addition that was put onto the back of the house?
Correct, and everything else on the property, Mr. Wisdom, is legal, everything, even the little side uh air conditioning. Um, uh, it's elevated. It's a deck with an air conditioner on it. That has a CO, everything has COs on it. This is the only thing he wanted to do, and he wanted to make sure that he complied with the law, and it does require, even though it's even with the house, it requires a variance.
And it's just going to be a deck?
It's just a deck.
I have nothing further.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wisdom. Is there anything further from the board? Does the board have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to grant the application type 2.
Motion is by Mr. Wisdom. Second by the chair. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
18 Adrian Lupski, 139 Overlook Drive, Mastic. Properties located on the east side of Overlook Drive and east of Eleanor Avenue Terminus, Mastic. Applicant requests side yard variance for existing wood deck not built in accordance with permit number 232197.
Mr. Chairman, I have Adrian Lupski. Thank you.
All right, uh, Ms. Lupski, I can see you. Can you hear us?
Yes, I can.
Very good. I'm just going to ask you to keep your voice up if you could and give your attention to the board's attorney, John Doyle, and he will swear you in.
I swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but truth to help you.
I do.
Very good. Let's start with your name and address, please.
Adrian Lupski, 139 Overlook Drive, Mastic, New York.
Very good. So uh, there was a a deck built at your house. You obtained a permit for it, and uh, the deck was built too close to a property line. Is that, is that what happened here?
Yes, yes, I purchased the home in 2012 where the deck already existed. Um, I was not told at the time of purchase there were any issues with it. Um, I have not altered it since the time of purchase with the exception of, you know, painting it and putting up a lattice, which you should see in the pictures I submitted.
Very good. Um, in terms of the setback required, is what, what zone is this? Is this an A-zone?
I'm an A-zone, yes.
All right, so the setback required is 10 feet?
Yes.
And what does your survey show us? Does that back turned out to be? I'm not reading it there, so that's why I'm asking.
It's four foot side yard requested, 10, uh, 10 foot required.
All right, so it it ended up being built with a four-foot side yard as opposed to the 10 note that's required by the permit?
Yes.
All right, and in terms of its existence um and setback, uh, does it compare favorably to other accessory structures in your neighborhood?
Yes.
Meaning that there's other decks about with about four feet of um, of uh setback to property lines? We we know that these are waterfront um parcels.
Yeah, I mean, as far as I know, I I guess that a deck was here when I purchased it. I I wasn't, I was unaware of the, you know, the issues with it at time of purchase. So I'm just trying to uh make it right.
Thank you. We do, we do see the parcel is uh, shape is uh similar. Yeah, see, it has, it has some issues. And as a result, it does come in um closer uh as as it, you enter the.
On one side.
Center of it, yes, and that's on the side where the deck is.
Yes, that's where the steps are to go down the deck.
All right. All right, um, and with regard to the grade of the deck, do you know how high it is off the ground?
I I do not.
Is it, I I see a set of steps there. How many steps are there to get up to the deck?
There's three.
And is there vegetation on on that side of the of the deck?
No.
In terms of the um, looking at the aerial of parcel now, it appears as though the deck would is is obviously on the water side of your home, and it also appears to be forward of the house. The house next door to you, is that, is that?
Well, the house, the house next door, you see to like the right of it is the, that's the reservation.
The.
There's that's an, that house right there that you see is an empty, it's an empty house. It's actually gutted. Nobody lives there, and it's on the Poussetac Reservation.
All right, very good. Yeah, that's why it's not numbered there.
Yeah, yeah.
All right. Um, thank you very much. Is there anything further from the board? Is this uh, we subject to chapter 81 where it's a waterfront? Nothing? All right, then does the board have a motion?
Yeah, like make a motion to uh grant the application.
Motion is by uh Mr. Wisdom to grant as a type 2 action, seconded by Mr. Lazaru. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Lupski. Good luck to you.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Case number 19, Jose Luis Alvarez Rivera, 116 South Parkwood Drive, Shirley. Properties located on the south side of Parkwood Drive, 382 feet west of Flower Road, Shirley. Applicant requests permission for existing conversion of basement to accessory apartment on a 50-foot lot.
Mr. Chairman, I have a Roxentrella for the applicant.
Thank you. Ms. Jella, I can see you. Can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you.
Very good. I'm going to ask you to give your attention to Mr. John Doyle to be sworn.
Sure.
I swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but truth to help you.
Yes.
Very good. Let's start with your appearance and then your presentation.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Roxentrella Dynamic Expediting with offices at 1040 Terry Road, Ronconcombe, New York, agent for the applicant.
All right, then Ms. Jella, the request here is for permission to, for an existing basement conversion uh to uh, oh, existing conversion of basement to accessory apartment. It's a 50-foot wide lot that is both the reason why you're before the board. Tell us a little bit about what's going on.
Yes, um, so we did appear before the accessory apartment board on June 4th, uh, wherein the accessory apartment application was approved. We did do a survey of the neighbors surrounding the area, and we were able to locate two previous grants. Um, one was 3 Beechwood and Shirley for an accessory apartment in the basement on a 50-foot lot, and the other was 20 Birchwood and Shirley. So such, we don't believe that this would cause an adverse physical environmental impact on the neighborhood, and it is within the character and nature of the neighborhood. I'd ask that if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them now.
Thank you. Questions from the board?
Yes, sir.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Uh, my question to you is, as you just mentioned, there was two others that the uh applications that were, were they granted by this board? Is that?
Uh, they were granted by the zoning board. I'm not, I don't have the approvals with me. Um, they weren't able to mail them to me. They just answered that they did have the two approvals, and they sent me the addresses.
Okay, and the size is comparable to what you're proposing on those two other grants?
Yes.
Okay, and what is the size of the accessory?
This accessory apartment is 690 square feet.
Oh, it isn't fully, it isn't the size of the full footprint of the house. It's a section of the basement. Is that correct?
While we're checking, while we're checking, there's a lot of background noise. I'm, I'm going to ask all of you, please to mute yourselves. Well, now I realize it's none of us. It's Ms. Trelle.
Oh, I I apologize. Can you just don't make any mistake and hear you? Okay, it is, it's mo- most of the basement. The only part of it that's not part of the accessory apartment is the utility room, and there's a small unfinished area.
Okay, and so, and you're going to hold to the uh 620 square feet, is that what you said? No, 690. And where would the entrance be for the basement?
The basement has, and it has a side entrance.
Is that the one that's on the, I'm assuming the west side of the home?
Yes.
Next to the driveway?
Yes.
Okay, um, and you have approval from, um, you said from the uh accessory apartment review board? Is that correct?
Yes, we were at the June 4th hearing where it was approved.
Okay, all right, Mr. Chairman, no further questions.
Thank you, Mr. Cunha. Is, is there anything further from the board? Does the board have a motion?
I'd like to grant the application as presented type 2.
Motion is by Mr. Cunha, seconded by Mr. Wisdom. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Case number 20, Gary Kinsel, 15 Everett Street Patchogue. Properties located on the north side of Everett Street, 130 feet west of New York State Route 112, Patchogue. Applicant requests side yard variance for existing detached garage located in the required side yard.
Ms. Trelle, is this your case also?
Yes, it is.
Very good. You've been sworn. Let's start with your appearance for the record, please.
Roxentrella Dynamic Expediting Services with offices located at 1040 Terry Road, Ronconcombe, New York, agent for the applicant.
And what would you like to tell us here?
Okay, uh, we're seeking a side yard variance for the existing detached garage. The detached garage is 30 by 14 and 10 feet 8 inches in height. It was reconstructed about 12 years ago to replace the prior detached garage. The prior detached garage was CO'd in 1965 on certificate number 1628. The prior garage, the only difference is it was about 10 feet shorter, uh, but that's because it had an attached shed to it that actually was the same exact. A length it is now, except they had it as a garage and a shed. Um, when they rebuilt it, they rebuilt it as one structure. We did do a survey of the surrounding properties, and we were able to find a couple of properties that did have the same detached garage in the side yard. One was the adjacent neighbor right to the west, number 19 Everett. And that detached garage has a setback, a side yard setback of 2.7 and was legalized under a certificate of existing use. We have a legalized detached garage um across the street at 20 Everett, um, right down the road at 28 Everett with 2.11 um side yard setback.
We see all of those in the aerial in addition to the commercial use uh on the garage side of this parcel. Is that still existing?
Yes, it is.
Very good.
It's a gas station.
All right, thank you. Uh, questions from the board?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, can you?
Ms. Lazaru, yes.
Okay. Um. Reiterate to me, uh, when was this garage converted or reconstructed?
It was reconstructed about 12 years ago.
About 12 years ago, and you said that the original building had a shed added to the back of it?
Yes, it is on the original survey from 1972. It shows the detached garage and the attached shed on it.
This is all one structure under one roof?
Yes, and I do have interior photo if you'd like to see it.
Go ahead, please.
That is the inside of the garage.
Uh, okay, there's no car store in there, is there?
No, it's mostly household items and lawn mowers, things like that.
And we did, we did see evidence of similar installations almost on the uh, the lot line, uh, especially next door and a few down the street and across the street.
Yes, exactly.
Okay, I have no further questions, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Is there anything further from the board? Ms. Jella, I know that you put that photograph up. Are are the walls finished in that structure?
No, they are not.
All right, so there's not, no heat source and no plumbing?
No heat, no plumbing.
Very good. Is there anything further from the board? Does the board have a motion?
I would say grant the application type 2, please.
Motion is by Mr. Lazaru to grant as a type 2 action, seconded by, I can't tell, uh, Mr. Wisdom. Very good. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Case number twenty-one, Dan Arena, one twenty-first Street, Port Jefferson Station. Properties located on the northwest corner, twenty-first Street and Barrow Drive, Port Jefferson Station. Applicant requests front yard setback from Beach Avenue and side yard variances for proposing ground swimming pool located in the front yard. Height variance for proposed six-foot-high fence located in the front yards, Beach Avenue and twenty-first Street, and within the thirty-foot radius of the apex section.
Mr. Chair, I have Andrew Maguana for the applicant. I also have Dan and Ordana Arena, the applicants.
All right, thank you. Mr. Vega, while we're pulling them up, the board members will need the aerial on this one to, to see what the current state of. Yeah, that's what I wanted to see. Very good. All right, so let's look for Mr. Maguana. You're here and you have yourself muted. If you can unmute yourself. Thank you. Welcome back. It appears as though your clients are attending. Did you wish for them to speak or are they observing?
They can speak. They can speak.
All right, let's see if we can promote the arenas, please.
I have promoted them and I have asked to unmute and to start the video. I'm just getting no response from them.
All right, that's good. It's possible. They just want to, um, to observe. If that changes, please let us know. Mr. Maguana, you've been sworn. Start with your appearance and then give us a little bit of background here.
Yes, Andrew Maguana, uh, applicant for the, um, agent for the applicant.
Very good. You are seeking front yard setback variances for, uh, pools and fences in an area that, um, shows as some of the frontages are unpaved roadway. So I think that's the crux of the application. I thought that you could give us specifics.
Yes, it's in a nutshell. Basically, it's a unique lot. Um, it is technically a front yard, but as you can see from there, it is not, um, there is no street. Uh, also, we are asking for this setback most, you know, to, you know, maximize yard. Also, there's a buried propane tank, as you can see on the survey. Try and stay as far away from that as possible. We don't feel granting this application will be, have an adverse effect on the neighborhood. If you have any questions, please let me know.
Thank you. Questions from the board?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Burksen.
So Andrew, Beach Street, Beach Avenue is not open, is that right?
Twenty-first Street and Beach, uh, Street are not open, uh, Beach Avenue not open, correct?
So the house actually fronts on, uh.
For our, yeah, yes.
Okay. And do you know who? Do you know, are there any plans to open any of those streets? You go onto those?
Not that I'm aware. I don't see a reason, you know, from the aerial, the, the, the area is developed. I don't see a reason to open, uh, said streets. So I believe, I don't know for a fact, but I don't believe so.
So I see that the, uh, the fence is sort of curved at the, uh, at that intersection of the unopened streets.
Correct.
In, in theory, I suppose they could be opened this.
I mean, and yeah, I mean, yes, yes, it could definitely in theory be opened, um, while most, you know, highly unlikely it could be. But we will be holding on to that, uh, the curve of the, of the property, you know, so we're not going to be going over the line. So this, I mean, there are, there's no sight view now and hopefully they're, you know, they don't, you know, it doesn't look like they're going to build it anyway. So I don't for, I don't foresee a, an issue with that.
Angela, let me ask you, and I'm sorry to, to interrupt, Mr. Burksen. Are there, are there parcels that would, that require access onto Beach? Do we know whether or not Beach will be developed? I am looking, by the way, at another, another view through Google and Google is showing me that there, the roadways are open. I don't quite know why, um, I'm not sure if, if it's the same location, Mr. Maguana, did you want to help us?
I don't, I don't have, I don't have that information, um, although, you know, it, let's, let's, let's put it back. Even if they were open, uh, it's still, it's still my client's backyard and.
Yes.
You know, typical backyard, um, six-foot fence for privacy is, is pretty standard. So even if the unlikely event that they did open these roads, uh, I still don't foresee, uh, you know, adverse effect on the neighborhood.
Yeah, well, that may be, Andrew, but if you're going to go with the assumption or the possibility that they're going to be open, you have a six-foot fence within the, uh, the area of the intersection. I have nothing to judge on whether or not that, that could be an impediment to traffic at the time. And if it's, if it's open already, then maybe we should look at it.
It goes both ways. Absolutely. You know, I can't, I can't argue that, that point.
It, it, it does appear that any access is going to be limited to one, maybe two lots. I don't know that there's a lot of traffic back there, but I don't disagree with Mr. Burksen. Whenever we deal with, um, with structures in the apex of an intersection over the permitted height, that is always a concern of the board. I do see that there, the, that it doesn't, it's not going to property lines to the corner that it's curving. Um, and there's some, there's some setback there.
And we have a right, we have a right of way in between too, so it's not going to be at the street if the street in, you know, in fact comes at some point.
It, it does also show us, well, I mean, that's the case. So if, if I have a board member that, that wishes, uh.
Yeah, I would prefer somebody take a look at it. Before we just approve this in that apex.
All right, I, I do have, um, Mr. Reed still here. So what, what, let me ask if he has any further comment from, for us.
Okay.
Yeah, so this lot went to the zoning board a few years ago as the aerial depicts its new construction. And it's my understanding that both twenty-first Street and Beach is now improved with town roadways, although not the typical width because they don't serve a lot of properties in this neighborhood. So it's my opinion that the thirty-foot encroachment into the apex would not be an issue because of the lack of improved lots. But my understanding again is those streets, twenty-first and Beach are now improved.
All right. Mr. Burksen.
Yes, sir.
How, how does that, um, deal with the concerns that you have expressed? You, would you, are you requesting that we have traffic safety?
I, I'm willing to accept Mr. Reed's, uh, interpretation of the circumstances.
All right, are there any further questions on the application? I'm not hearing any. Just the board have a motion?
Move to approve the application submitted type two.
Motion is by Mr. Burksen, seconded by, and I'm sorry again, I didn't see it. By Mr. Mazarella, all in favor? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we, this is case number twenty-one. We've been here just about two hours, just over two hours. We asked the board for a brief, a motion for a brief recess. I'd say, uh, four, four twenty. Is there, does the board have a motion?
So move.
Motion seconded on, have you made all in favor?
Aye.
Anthony, you gotta let me start video.
All right, is there a motion to resume the hearing? Motion second have been made all in favor. Any opposed, motion carries, welcome back. We will continue this hearing with case number 21.
Twenty-two.
Very good.
I think.
Yes, you're right.
Okay, twenty-two Jeremiah Hogan, nine Huckleberry Lane, East of Tocket, located on the east side of Huckleberry Lane, three hundred and forty-five feet north of Upper Sheep pasture road east of Tocket. Applicant request side yard variance for proposed three-car detached garage exceeding the six hundred square feet permitted, nine hundred and fifty square feet located in the required side yard.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair, I have Jen Jennifer Leeds for the applicant.
Thank you. All right then, Ms. Leeds, we can see you can you hear us?
Yes, I can.
Very good. You can you just give us your appearance for the record, please?
Sure, I am the agent for Jeremiah Hogan and Jennifer Leeds office at one thirty-four Sequoia Drive in Corum, New York.
Very good. Do we need to have you sworn? Yes, can you give your attention to Mr. Doyle, please?
I swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth will help you.
Yes.
All right, then what would you like to tell us about this application?
Mr. Hogan is proposing a three-car detached garage. The reason for the size of the garage is Mr. Hogan owns eight vehicles, two motorcycles. He has three collector cars. He plans to use the detached garage for five of the cars and two motorcycles. He does have an attached garage to the house. He only stores one car in there and on the other side he has storage. He spoke with all the surrounding neighbors to the property, so we have, where the garage is proposed, the south neighbor and the east, both sent letters in support of the application, and he even reached out to the owner directly across the street as well. There are a couple other detached garages in the area. I sent another aerial just kind of showing you the location of those. He is asking for, obviously, the square footage, six hundred allowed. He's asking for nine fifty, and he's asking for side yard relief too. He's asking for twenty and twenty-five.
Thank you. Thank you. Questions from the board?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman.
Is it Mr. Mizarella?
So the the proposal is for a three-car. Can you tell me a little bit about the proposed construction of the garage itself? I don't see a height there on the plan.
He's not asking for height. He's gonna stick with fourteen, the allowable height. So it's really just the size of it is because of the amount of collector vehicles that he has. They don't, he doesn't really drive them very often, so he does, you can see in some of the pictures I gave, some of the cars are right out in the driveway with covers on them, and they're very expensive, and he'd rather have them stored in in a in the detached garage.
Okay, so there's nothing.
Two of the cars were in a shop, so he didn't have two of the collector cars pictures for me, but there's two more in addition to what I sent him.
A garage that's attached is a two-car?
Yes, that was built with the home, the original house.
All right, so it'll be nothing, nothing above where the.
No.
No, no above that, that's that all then.
It's strictly storage for the cars and the motorcycles.
Okay, I would be interested to hear those letters if we have them available and also if there are any other comments from any of the surrounding neighbors.
Thank you, Mr. Mizarella. Ms. Ricari will read the letters now.
Yeah, I have a letter from Robert Bronzino, owner of eight Huckleberry Lane. I'm the owner of the property across the street. I have been for been informed that Mr. Hogan is seeking a variance to build a detached garage on the south side of the property. I support the request for a zoning variance. I have a letter from Michael Speck of fifteen Huckleberry Lane. He is the owner that borders the south property line of the subject parcel. He is in support of the request for the zoning variance for the garage on the south side, and I have a letter from Donald Raber for Cedarwood Court. He's the owner of the property that borders the east property line, and he is in support of the variance for the garage.
Thank you. Anyone else that wants to speak on it? Anthony, do you know?
I do not have any other speakers for this case.
I have no further questions, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Mizarella. Is there anything further from the board? Ms. Leeds, you are seeking a fifty percent variance in terms of square footage on behalf of the applicant. You've indicated that you have different aerials showing us other detached garages in the area.
Yes, there's one, just as you, he's in a unique area there over in that neighborhood. It's a very thin road. So he's kind of off the beaten path there. The the main roads are Pond Path and Upper Sheep pasture, and that's where the other garages are located. The house across the street from one of the owners, eight Huckleberry Lane, he has a very large garage, but it's attached to the house. He has a three-car garage, but it's an attached three-car garage.
In in terms of the square footage being requested, does that, would that compare favorably to any of the detached garages that you've referenced?
Yes, the attached one to that house, but the detached one on Pond Path five forty-five, I would say yes, the one at fifteen Upper Sheep pasture is a little smaller than what he's requesting. I don't know the exact square footage on those, but I can, just from driving through and looking. It's it's a two-car garage, that one.
Thank you. Does the structure as proposed intend to have a plumbing source?
No.
How about HVAC of any type?
Not that I know of. I did not ask that question. You know, he'll have electric, but there no bathroom, you know, no nothing like that. It's.
So no heat source or air conditioning?
He's store, he's storing them.
All right, and for proposed garages, especially those that exceed the code permission such as this one does to some, to a good degree, this board as a custom, will impose a covenant concerning the use. Have you spoken to your client about that issue on? Any comments here?
Yes, yes, with the square footage, because it was high what he's asking.
All right, very good, then thank you. Is there anything further from the board on the application? If not, does the board have a motion?
Yes, with the channel, I would grant the application with any and all covenants that would pertain to it.
Thank you. As a type-two action, that motion is by Mr. Mizarella, and I'll take the second by Mr. Lazaru. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna abstain because I didn't hear part of the application.
Very good. The record should reflect that Mr. Burkson abstains, motion carries five in favor with one abstention.
Thank you.
Thank you. You too.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Vega.
I have a number of attendees and speakers here who have still have not identified which case they would like to speak on. They can either in the chat or the Q and A feature express which case they would like to speak on.
All right, and I know that each of you sitting as attendees heard that if you were sitting as an attendee without renaming yourself with a number next to your name, and we can identify you as associated with the case, I can only assume that you're here to monitor only. I would like to give everyone the opportunity to speak that wishes to speak, so please cooperate with us in any way. And if there's any question, you can use a Q and A feature or the chat feature, I guess, especially the chat feature that isn't is as part of the program, and we will assist you in any way that we can.
Case number twenty-three, Susan and James Hazen and Melissa Roth, care of Andrew Melgnera. Properties located on the west side of Gabon Lane, one hundred and forty feet north of Graven Street, Corum. Applicant request height and side yard variances for proposed fourteen-foot-high shed located in the required side yard.
Mr. Melgnera, looks like you have always had five in a row with us.
Little stretch.
All right, hope you're prepared. What do you have here?
So what we have here is a proposed shed. It's needed for storage purposes for the house. The house has no basement for said storage, so they tend to use this for that. The reasoning for that location is just access to the house. They're gonna be storing stuff that they'll need, and they wanna, you know, easy access in and out. stuff that they'll need and they wanna, you know, easy access in and out. They can't move it back because there's trees, there's trees and they tend to put a pool in the other back corner at some point as well. It is, it's three hundred and eighty-four square foot shed. It's not tremendously big. If you have any questions, please let me know.
Thank you. Questions from the board? I think this one would be Mister Wisdom.
Mister Chair.
Mister Wisdom.
So Andrew, for the proposed, was a foot fourteen-foot-high shed?
Yes.
Okay, so, and it's located in the required side yard, which has to be located the side yard?
Correct.
Is it? Is it obvious or is it? Is it blending with the neighborhood? I mean, this is a pretty big piece of property.
Yeah, I mean, it's, you know, there there's not a bunch of sheds, you know, of, you know, in the neighborhood per se, but for our purposes, it's just necessary. They have no, they have not, they don't have adequate storage in the in the property, so it's, it's almost a hardship for them in terms of not having the adequate space.
But they're using the shed as for more space.
Yeah, more or less, yeah. More or less is what they would put in the normal basement, they'd put in there.
And that's over, is that, that's the one that's low located over near the brick patio?
Correct, yeah. As you can see in the survey, there's a, there's a walk to it. It's just easy access.
Yes, I could see that.
Right.
So it conforms to the neighborhood. It's not out of character.
It doesn't, it doesn't affect the neighborhood in any way.
I have nothing further.
Thank you.
Mister Chairman.
Thank you, Mister Wisdom. Mister Burksen.
Andrew, this is sixteen, this is sixteen by twenty-four feet?
It's is sixteen by twenty-four, three hundred and eighty-four square feet.
That's a big shed for a side yard, Andrew.
I mean, it's not, it's not, you know, it's not a yeah, I mean, it's, it's I would say it's borderline, you know, I mean, it's one of those, there is no, again, as I said, it's it's for storage purposes of the house. If they had a basement, they wouldn't need it, you know, but they don't and it's one of those things that it's necessary for them. I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna disagree. It's not the smallest shed, but it's, you know, it is, it's under four hundred square feet, which is in line with what a shed's allowed to be.
Not necessarily, well.
Well, yeah.
I mean, there's a reason, there's a reason why this is, this is not just, this is a height and side yard variance. And you're asking us for permission, not just for the fourteen feet, but to put that size shed in that size, in that side yard.
Correct. I mean, it's just, it's just, it's just the the best overall occasion for it and it will, it's gonna look, the night, it's for looks purposes, they want it this size. I mean, it's gonna, it's gonna blend with the house nicely. This is the way it's set up.
I, I, I can't say that I I'm convinced, but I don't have anything else. I have nothing else right now, Mister.
Thank you, thank you, Mister Burksen. Mister Malguinera, obviously, we don't usually see requests for height on sheds and the size of the one that's in this side yard. Is this a structure that's being purchased as is and just being brought there? Is that why you're asking for fourteen feet?
As far as I'm, as far as I'm aware, yes.
It's pre-built and it hasn't arrived yet and obviously they're all at alternative locations, but this is, I know there was a difficult response to Mister Burksen's question. It certainly
I don't wanna, I don't wanna, I don't wanna lie to them, so.
I know that, so I mean, you you can't admit that it's a large shed, but you can also you could probably admit that it's not a small shed because we see them in the hundred square, hundred square foot range at at a twelve-foot height. So apart from the fact that it's being, the structure is being purchased and brought there and that's why the height, it already exists. Is there any other reason for the request for height in this application?
Not that I'm aware of. I mean, you know, if it was, again, if we go back to a detached garage, if it was detached garage, it would, it'd be more just, you know, in line because garages are
It's only two hundred square feet short of a detached garage.
Right, right. So I mean, you know, it's just, it's just not a garage, but it it would fall in line with what a garage would normally be if you want to go that route.
I mean, it it normally went with it in the side yard at twelve feet. You see, you have a six-foot fence surrounding it on the side and the front. You know, only there's some vegetation and they're hard to, they're hard to see because they're, 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 the foliage or the fencing is in the way. Yes, someone wishing to speak? Oh, I'm sorry, I thought I heard something. So let me ask you again, in terms of the location of it, that's obviously the preferred location by the applicant. It's a side yard. They probably don't use it. Be nice to to do something with it. You mentioned a pool before. It's not a corner lot, so they do have alternatives for a pool location here. Is there a reason why they can't bring it to an area behind the front, behind the rear foundation of the house?
There are trees in that location as far as I'm aware.
Anthony's helping out here, like he's pulling up an aerial for us.
Thank you. A little blurry, but there are.
All right. All right. Is there anything further from the board on this application? Hearing none, then does the board have a motion? Mister Burksen, how about a motion? No, you can't, we didn't hear that motion because you're on mute.
Closing hall.
I think, I thought, I thought you said closing hold. Our motion is by Mister Burksen, close and hold, seconded by Mister Wisdom, all in favor?
Aye.
The opposed motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Andrew, that was only the first of five, so.
Four more left, four more left. The rest, the rest are easier.
All right, well, you're admitting this one's not so good either then.
Case number twenty-four, Linda and Andrew Mantis, care of Andrew Malguinera, located on the west side of Tuttle Point Road, three hundred and ninety-three feet south of Tuttle Point Road, East of Ridges. Applicant requests height variance for proposed eight-foot-high fence around proposed tennis court.
All right then, Mister Malguinera, you are still with us. Your appearance for the record, please.
Andrew Malguinera, seven thirteen Main Street, Port Jefferson, agent.
Thank you. We see the request for an eight-foot fence around a tennis court. What would you like to tell us?
So our, my, my client is an avid tennis player, as I used to be. Stoner Brook School, varsity, class two thousand and one. And as you know, you know, tennis courts require, you know, a little additional fencing, so the balls don't fly everywhere. Normally ten-foot, we actually are only doing eight. And it's not around the entire tennis court. It's just around the 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 back perimeter of each side. So they could adequately keep the balls in play. It has no adverse effect to the neighborhood. There is actually many, if you pull up the aerial, there are tennis courts on eighteen in front and various, a couple others around across the street and we are holding the required setback for said tennis court, so we're only really asking for the fence. If the board has any other questions, please let me know.
Very good. I think that this application comes to me, I'm familiar with the area and we have seen applications for eight-foot fences around tennis courts, so I don't have anything for you. Is there anything further from the board? All right, then I'll ask for a motion.
Chairman, I move to approve the application submitted type-two.
All right, motion is by Mister Cunha. I'll take the second, I'm sorry, motion by Mister Burksen. I'll take the second by Mister Cunha. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Case number twenty-five, Ruth Ortega Castro and Jose Martinez, care of Andrew Malguinera. Properties located on the southwest corner, Brandywine Drive and North Titmus Drive, Mastick. Applicant requests rear yard and side yard variances for proposed above-ground swimming pool, height variance for existing six-foot-high fence to be moved to property line located in the front yard, North Titmus Drive.
All right then, Miss Malguinera, we still have you here. Let's start with your appearance for the record.
That's Andrew Malguinera for the applicant.
All right, then you're going to have to now present a case to Mister Cunha concerning your request for six-foot side and rear yards, or is it side and side and rear? For a pool, go ahead.
Okay, so this is a unique lot in terms of shape. This is their, this is their entire yard right there. So they want a pool and obviously to to have some sort of yard, they need to push it back. You know, as much as as the board will will be willing to give, they're requesting six-foot. The, as far as this, this stockade fence, it has no impact on on traffic. It is, you know, purely a privacy fence. There are big trees in front of it. So it is, you know, not, not, you know, too visible from the street. And there are many, many above-ground pools in the area, as you can see from the aerial, so it has, it falls right in line with with the surrounding neighborhood. If you have any other questions, please let me know.
Thank you. Questions from the board?
Mister Chair.
Mister Cunha.
Since you, since you pointed me out, I might as well start, right? Okay, the the fence is being moved back, is that correct?
Yeah, it's gonna be, it will put it onto the line that corner, right.
Okay, and you had stated that there is no it's not blocking anyone's vision coming up to the corner on Brandywine, correct?
Yeah, not in any way.
Not in any way. Secondly, are there other fences in the area that are similar in nature?
I mean, there, there really aren't lots like this per se in the area. The fence has been there for numerous years and has had no effect, but this is a unique lot in terms of how it is set up. The house is set back, so there is no backyard. So this is more or less their backyard, their only yard they have. So, you know, in turn, they, you know, you would like privacy from North Titmus.
Okay, and as you stated, there are other pools in the aerial that are similar. I believe there's one just to the south, if I'm not mistaken.
They're numerous.
I don't have the aerial up right now.
Right.
But are they all six feet from the property lines, my question?
I would say they're probably, you know, if you would, probably somewhat closer, to be honest with you. I mean, fifty-three, fifty-two, Brandywine. Off the top, two sixty-one, Titmus is close. There's various pools all above ground, just like, just like we're asking for in the neighborhood.
And I believe, I think, two sixty-two looks like it has either a pond or a pool in its, in its front yard. Is that correct?
Right, and two sixty-eight behind it as well.
Okay, um, and is the, what is the reasoning for for not doing it as, you know, per code of ten feet?
It's fifteen feet, is, I believe, is the code.
I'm sorry.
And, and it's really to keep the, we don't wanna go, you don't wanna go past the front foundation of the house and also, again, like to maximize their yard, because this is the only yard they have to gather in. So as much space as they could possibly have, they'd prefer. And if we were to move it over and go forward of the the front foundation of the house, we're going to the front yard and we know the board doesn't like that too much, so, you know, we don't, we know, I know, under normal circumstances, a normal lot, six-foot is aggressive ask. In this situation, I feel it, I feel it fits.
And the reason why it can't be moved closer to the house?
Again, it's all about maximizing yard, you know, I mean, if you, if, if, you know, if we can, we can move it a foot, you know, but, you know, it's, any, you know, any further out, they're losing their, their gathering space.
I mean, they have at least twenty-seven, they have at least twenty or thirty feet from the concrete patio to the pool, the way you're setting it up right now, so I mean, we could bring it a little closer to conformity.
Right, right. I, I could, you know, if you want, if you want to settle for for eight feet on on that one side, I could probably make that work.
Is, is, are, are you amending the application?
Uh, yes, if, yes, this, yes.
It's probably a good idea, Mister Malguinera. Thank you. Does whatever motion, the amendment would be to get this straight. It's the, it's the, it's the side yard. The amendment would be for a side yard setback from six feet to eight feet. Rear yard remains at six.
Correct.
So moved.
Second, Mister Cunha, second by Mister Wisdom, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed motion carries? And the amended application calls for a different setback for the side yard for the pool. Mister Cunha, was there anything further?
No, Mister Chair, thank you.
Is there anything further from the board?
Mister Chairman.
Mister Vega.
I have a speaker on the case.
Very good.
I have Denise.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can hear you. We're not seeing you yet. I just, it's been, just been just a little bit of delay this evening. Now, now you're here. Denise, I'm sure that's not your last name, so why don't you give us, why don't you first give your attention to the board attorney? We'll swear you in.
Yes.
All right then, let's start with your name and address.
My name is Denise. The address is two fifty-four North Titmus Drive. It lived there as well. It's just in regards to the amendments that they're making.
Could you give us your, your last name, please?
Yes, Madrigal, M A D R I G A L.
Thank you. So the, obviously, you've you've sat and listened to the hearing. The request was by the applicant through, as a result of questioning from the board for an amendment to the application, bringing the pool closer to the house. The applicant's house further away from, further away from the property line to its, to its side yard.
Uh, yes.
Didn't understand that.
I'm sorry, we can do it to, as, as they're saying with the eight feet, I was just wanting to mention that there is a cesspool. That's why we did request it can be six feet from both sides. If that's okay, if you can keep it that way, that's like in regards to what he's saying.
So now, now I understand you to be the applicant. Is that, is that, is that true?
No, no, I'm sorry. I'm just speaking in regards to them because they're both in, in for them because they're both working.
All right, so in instances where the, the pool is being proposed with a setback because of a septic system, the board would require the septic system be located on the existing survey, so are you suggesting that you want them to go back to the surveyor and get a new survey showing us the septic system?
Um, no, I mean, it's fine if they, if there has to be the eight feet and the six feet on, I didn't want to like make it
All right, listen, it very, it very well may be on the amended application should the board granted that they will go to install the pool. Now, this is an above-ground pool, so I'm not sure whether, whether there's an issue with septic, but I'm not, that's not my specialty. But if there is an issue, then that's what I would suggest, that the septic be located on the survey and that the applicant come back to us for further relief. Understand that?
Um, a little bit, I'm sorry.
If, if there's an issue, if there's an issue when, when putting pool up, we will, we will.
Okay. Okay, understand. All right. Sorry about that, thank you.
No, 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 thank you very much for attending. So Mister Malguinera, if there's nothing further, I'm gonna ask the board for a motion on this amended application. Does the board have the motion?
Yes, Mister Chair, I'd like to grant the application as amended type-two.
Motion by Mister Cunha, seconded by Mister Wisdom, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Case number twenty-six, Vincent Amato, care of Andrew Malguinera. Properties located on the north side of Grandview Drive, two hundred and sixteen feet west of Ocean Avenue, Blue Point. Applicant requests front yard setback variance for proposed roof over porch.
Mister Chair, I also have the applicant Vincent Amato.
Thank you, you can promote him. Mister Malguinera, your appearance for the record here.
Andrew Malguinera for the applicant.
All right, you are requesting front yard setback for a porch?
Yes.
What do you want, what do you want to tell us specifically?
We're just trying, we want to add the porch for aesthetic purposes, just to further enhance the house. He's doing significant renovations to said house and this will just add to that. It is completely in line with the area. Almost every house on along the block is, are on through the street and we will be even after this variance. I submitted pictures earlier showing all the other houses in the area that are significantly close to the, to the road. So there'll be no adverse effect in any way. If you have any questions, please let me know.
Thank you. And the new section of the code pertaining to front yard porch doesn't assist this application because it's too, is it too close? Is that what it is a setback of fifteen feet?
Yeah, it's too close, right.
All right, we do have your client here and I'm not sure if Mister Amato is only here to observe. All right, if, if that changes, Mister Amato, you're gonna have to unmute yourself. I'll ask the board now, are there any questions?
Yes, Mister Chair.
Mister Lazaru.
So Mister Malguinera, this is a, this is a proposed addition. This is not
Yes.
Those porch with a roof over.
Correct.
Right. According to the site plan I'm looking at, this would make the front edge of the porch or the roof, leading edge of the roof or whatever it is, fifteen foot from Grandview Drive. this would make the front edge of the porch or the roof, leading edge of the roof or whatever it is, fifteen foot from Grandview Drive.
Correct.
Not, not on the perpendicular.
Right.
As is the corner of the building, so, in your experience, would you say that they're both at the same, uh, dimension, if they were measured in the same, uh, geometry? In other words, would they both be sixteen feet?
Um, it, it's, yeah, I mean, the, the, the road as it turns in is sixteen feet from the house, so the house is actually already holding sixteen feet. Um, you are holding one, uh, one foot closer, it's close, but yeah, I know what you're saying, it's, it's right there.
Yeah, well, if the dimension to the corner of the house, to the corner of the property line is perpendicular to Grandview, would not that, uh, porch be measured in the same direction, and that would probably be even shorter?
I mean, the, I mean, hmm, I mean, scaling it out, that's what, that's what it comes to, again, rather safe and sorry, with, with, with a proposed porch, you know, so, it's for, the, the dimensions of the porch, it's only four, it's only four feet out by seventeen. Um, so, again, you know, as my father taught me when proposing it, always ask for a foot less, just in case, you know, so, uh, if it turns out to be sixteen feet, then so be it, but, um, you know, you always wanted to double check yourself.
Whatever, I just had to ask the question, no more questions.
We now have another Malgdonara secret, though, that's very good. Uh, Mr. Amato's already, oh, Mr. Amato's back, so you, Mr. Amato, you've taken yourself off of mute, did you wish to participate in this hearing?
Oh, sorry, no, I'm Andrew's handling it, I, you know, I just wanted to.
Andrew's, Andrew's doing a fine job, but we appreciate you being here, um, is there any, is there, is there anything further, further from the board on the application? If there's nothing further, I'll note for the record that the application is subject to chapter eighty-one of the code, uh, does it have a motion?
Grant the application type two, subject to chapter eighty-one.
Very good, a motion is by Mr. Lazarus. Uh, second by Mr. Cunha, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed motion carries?
Case number twenty-seven, Diane Sabatini La Bianca, care of Andrew Malgdonara. Properties located on the north side of Washington Heights Street, six hundred and nine feet west of Magnolia Drive, Selden. Applicant requests height variance for existing six-foot high fence on top of eighteen-inch high wood wall, nine-foot overall height, and a side yard variance for existing shed.
Mr. Chair, I have a speaker on this case.
Thank you, Mr. Vega, Mr. Malgdonara, I know that you're still with us, let's start with an appearance, please.
Andrew Malgdonara for the applicant.
Very good, what would you like to tell us here?
All right, so, what we have here is, uh, you know, one of those quirky rules town has with the, uh, retaining wall and the fence on top. Uh, so it is, you know, albeit a nine-foot high, uh, wall in the town's eyes, um, has no adverse effect. It, uh, it was done for grading purposes, it's been there since two thousand and seven. Uh, it just, it's just when the, installed the pool, they had to flatten it out, and that's the way, that's the way it came out. Um, the shed is a cinder block shed, been there since nineteen eighty, uh, it's not, not movable the way it is, so, uh, here we are, asking for permission to keep it there, again, it's been there since nineteen eighty, uh, if you have any questions, please let me know.
Mr. Chair, I also have the applicant.
All right, why don't you promote the applicant first? Uh, and, and just for the record, uh, Mr. Malgdonara, before I send it out, I, I, in looking at your survey, we do see the concrete walls and the fencing on the, uh, the west, north and east, sides of the parcel, and looking at it, I see on the west, uh, six-foot fence on top of a one and a half foot wall, that, that would be seven and a half feet. The, uh, the north one is the six on, six-foot fence on the three feet, that's the nine feet you're talking about, and then again, on the east side, we have six feet plus a foot and a half of, uh, retention wall, again, seven and a half, so there's one nine-foot section and two seven and a halves.
Right, not, not tremendous walls, just, uh, you know, for grading, so.
All right, questions from the board?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Burksen.
So, Andrew, the concrete walls are, support the grade, I, I assume.
Yes, yes.
So, the, the, when I'm, if I'm standing, looking at, if I'm standing in the backyard, looking at the rear yard, am I looking at the concrete wall, or is it?
Yes, if you're in the backyard, you're looking at the wall, and then, and then the, and then the, uh, it's above it.
Okay, so all the grades on all the neighbors are at the higher level?
Yes.
Yes.
I got two answers there, but okay.
Yes.
Okay, so, the neighbors are an impact by, impacted by either a seven and a half or a nine-foot wall, they're looking at a six-foot wall.
Correct.
Six-foot fence.
They're not impact, impacted, correct.
Okay, and the shed, you say, has been there for how long?
Uh, forty years going on. It's concrete cinder block, so, it's pretty, it's pretty locked in in that spot.
Well, all right, and, and it's not fourteen feet, and it's not four hundred square.
No, it is the, it is neither of those.
Okay, I have nothing further, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Burksen, Mr. Malgdonara, it appears as though we, we may have your client, Ms. La Bianca, with us, who's, um, I'm not sure whether or not Ms. La Bianca would like to be heard, ma'am, can you hear us?
Yes.
Very good, um, would you like to participate in the hearing?
Uh, no, I was just curious and here to observe.
All right, very good, uh, thank you very much for attending, uh, Mr. Malgdonara, we'll take care of the rest, the rest of it.
Thank you.
Is there anything further from the board on the application?
I think there's another person, isn't there?
Uh, yes, we have the speaker, um, Mr. Vega, we could promote them now.
Mr. Chair, we have Justin Timms. He is the neighbor on this.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Timms, sir, we can see you, can you hear us?
Uh, yes, I have my video on.
No, no, we, yeah, we can see you, absolutely, we can hear you also, very good, uh, can you give, please, your attention to, uh, Mr. John Doyle, or the board's attorney, we'll have you sworn.
Okay.
Just gonna tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but truth, to help you.
Yes.
All right, sir, let's start with your name and address, please.
Uh, I'm actually, I'm actually in contract to buy the house next door.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, but my, uh, you want my current address or, or that address?
Well, I, I'm gonna have you speak, so I'd like, whatever your residence address is, uh, we do have your name, um.
Yeah, it's Justin Timms, uh, one eight nine four Commonwealth Avenue, uh, in Merritt.
All right, so you, you're in contract to buy, is it thirty-seven or thirty-three?
Thirty-seven.
Thirty-seven, so this is the adjacent, uh, parcel, uh, when you went to see the house, did you notice there were retention walls, um, and fencing on the, on the, at the, at the parcel of thirty-five?
Yes.
All right, so there's no, there's no proposal to change any of that, the proposal is to, um, to, to, uh, to have the board consider variances for it, so it can, it can be certificated. So in terms of, uh, the fencing itself and the retention wall, there, at, at least on your side, the retention walls are one, um, one and a half feet. So the wall, the fence on the wall, uh, seven and a half feet, do you have, do you have any comment for the board in that regard?
No.
All right, and we, I do see it doesn't go up to the property line, it actually, um, is probably, you know, sixteen feet or so away from what will be your property line. All right, thank you, sir, and, so no further comment for us?
The only, uh, that, we, we're here just for like informational, but we wanted to know about the shed, um, the roof of the shed is very close to the fence, that it, it does like hang over the fence.
I will tell you that the survey that I'm looking at now, and I know, know that you can see it, but, um, the, the fencing is with, is inside of the property line, as far as, as I look at the survey, the, it had, if the fence was, the shed certainly is close to the fence, but the fence is not on the applicant's property line, it's, it's actually stepped in probably two feet or so. So, um, while it may appear, uh, uh, close to the fence, the shed is sitting probably two feet or two, actually, two point four feet, something like that, from the property line itself.
That's perfect, yeah, that's exactly what we wanted to know.
All right, so, um, and, uh, yeah, I, I mean, I wish you could see what we were looking at, I might be able to, if I put this up at the, I don't know how to do this.
I think I can, I think that's what I'm looking at, yeah, I can see it.
Um, all right, uh, so if, if that's what your concern was, hopefully, we've resolved that.
Yes.
Um, was there anything further?
No.
All right, is there anything further from the board on the application? Uh, does the board have a motion?
Move to prove the application is submitted type two.
Motion, second, MMA, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed motion carries, Mr. Timms, are you still with us, or did you, did you leave?
I, I changed his role.
No, no, that's fine, um, thank you very much, we can move on to the next case.
Case number twenty-nine, Patricia Turbine, five North Third Street, Holbrook, properties located on the northwest corner of North Third Street and Geary Avenue, Holbrook. Applicant requests front yard setback variance from Geary Avenue for existing shed located in the required front yard, also side yard variance for second existing shed.
Mr. Chair, I have Larry Buscemi for the applicant.
Thank you, Mr. Buscemi, I see you, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I also wanted to inform you that we do not have any green cards for this, Mr. Buscemi, on his envelope, indicated that he has not received any green cards back yet.
All right, and those are the, the return signature cards, not the, uh, not the, the proof of mailing.
Correct.
Do we, no, just be with us a second.
I ha, I have the white, um, receipts, and they are stamped July twenty-ninth from the post office. Um, they paid the fees, yes. Um, yeah, so if he could, uh, get them to the office when he gets them, that'd be great.
All right, Mr. Buscemi, you've, I guess you've heard that whole conversation, you don't have them yet, we anticipate that you will get them, and certainly, within the next seven to ten days before decision letters go out, we're gonna ask that you deliver what, what you receive.
So far, and it's been, you know, twelve, thirteen days, whatever, it's been nothing, it's very odd, I'm never.
And, and I'm saying, in, in, in this world right now, with what I think people are going through, it, it doesn't surprise me that they're not wishing to go meet someone to sign for an, an envelope. And, uh, we do, in fact, um, understand that to some extent, so, whatever comes to you, we, we ask that you just deliver.
Absolutely.
All right, you've previously been sworn, let's start with your appearance for the record, and then, um, your presentation.
Of course, Larry Buscemi, uh, fifteen Vine Your Way, Mount Sinai, New York, for the applicant.
All right, um, Mr. Buscemi, uh, what would you like to tell us about this application?
This is a, an application for two existing, by the way, the, the survey that's up right now is not.
I know, Mr. Vega's just about to get to it.
Okay, it's for two existing sheds that have existed, uh, for many years, since the early, uh, two thousands. Um, the first shed in the northwest corner, um, of the house is two point three feet from the property line, where three feet are required, so it's a diminutinous, um, variance in that case, that shed is about eight feet in height, uh, really very, would be very hard to move it, because it's locked in by a bunch of vegetation, um, not visible, uh, to the neighbor. Um, on the other shed, the one that's in the required side yard, uh, is ninety-seven square feet, and is about seven feet six, six inches in height. It's eleven feet from the street, it's in the secondary front yard, uh, as well as being three point two five feet from the northern border of the property. Um, both, well, again, would be very difficult to move that shed, um, for other reasons, just because of the way it's situated, you would have to remove a whole bunch of fencing and so on. Um, it's eleven feet from the street bed, so it doesn't really, uh, it's not terribly visible, it's in character and keeping with the neighborhood. Um, in fact, if you look at the bottom left of the survey that we're looking at right now, you can see the next door neighbor shed is only two feet from the property line. Um, so it's, it seems to be character and keeping the neighborhood, and the two sheds are attractive structures, and have been there for quite a long time.
Thank you, questions from the board?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Mazarella.
So can, uh, can we get an aerial up on, uh, this, thank you, Anthony? Trying to see, um, so you're saying neighbor has his, and, uh, what about the other surrounding neighbors, they have, uh, sheds, you would say, similar in nature to, uh, the applicant?
Absolutely, I've been looking at several of them on the aerial, if you look at property number one forty-eight, I believe it is, there's one in the front yard, there's, I'm seeing another one in property one forty-seven, it's just barely shy of the front yard. Um, and there, property number seven is one that's probably on the neighbor's yard, so it's haphazard shedding seems to be the, uh, the norm in this neighborhood. Um, and there, as far as I know, there have been no complaints by the neighbors.
Okay, you know, obviously surrounded by PVC, so, um.
Right.
They are not, uh, very visible at all, um, the shed's primary purposes are storage?
Yes.
And, uh, have any utilities going to either or?
No. I'll double check that, but I'm, let me just double check that before I say, yeah, no, there's no utility.
I have nothing further, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Mazarella, is there anything further from the board? All right, I, I think it's important to, um, to acknowledge for the record that this is a corner parcel, the primary front yard is North Third Avenue's, and that both of these sheds are rear of the rear foundation of the house. Albeit in this, in the secondary front yard on Geary Avenue, one of them is, and that's the relief for the front yard on the shed. Um, that being said, if there's something further from the board, I'll ask for a motion.
I'd like to, uh, accept the application as, uh, presented type two.
Motion is by Mr. Mazarella, second by Mr. Cunha, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed motion carries, thank you.
Thank you, have a great week.
Case number thirty, Dennis and Krista Peterson, two forty-seven Tremont Avenue, Medford. Property is located east side of Tremont Avenue, one hundred feet north of Pecanic Avenue, Medford. Applicant requests rear yard and side yard variances for existing deck.
Mr. Chair, I have a Kevin Gilfoyle for the applicant.
Thank you. Mr. Gilfoyle, I'm not, we're not seeing yet, I anticipate you will be here shortly.
Okay.
Well, we can hear you now, just waiting for you. Uh, there you go, you got it.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Kevin Gilfoyle, Allen White, Permit Services, eighty-six Center Street, for the applicant.
Thank you, Mr. Gilfoyle, good to see you, I'm gonna have you sworn by Mr. Doyle.
Absolutely.
Thank you, you are here for, uh, case number thirty, what did you wanna tell us about the variance request?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, uh, my client is looking to maintain an existing deck that's eleven and a half inches above grade, uh, built without a benefit of a permit, he thought he didn't really require one, because it was so low. Uh, we're looking to, uh, maintain an eight and a half foot, uh, rear yard and an eight-foot side yard. Uh, I have a picture of the deck to show you how it basically modest it is, um, in really good shape, it's, it's a two-level deck, but it's about eleven and a half inches total above grade.
Can you hold that photo just a little bit higher, Kevin?
Okay.
Yeah, it's, it's gonna actually put it almost like in front of your face, uh, because I'm seeing the top of the house there, but not the deck itself, oh, there, okay, now we see it, all right, so it looks like it's on grade.
Yes, about eleven and a half inches above.
Very good. All right, thank you, questions from the board?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Wisdom.
So, this is not out of character with the neighborhood at all?
Yeah, Mr. Wisdom, this, this area of old Metro off of Pecanic, there, um, you know, I tried looking at the aerials, even driving it, a lot of it's heavily tree, but there's, there's a, quite a number of sheds and decks that are probably holding about a similar side yard and rear yard setback on some of the properties, maybe some old one.
And I could see some of that from the aerial that I have, and I could see it from where I am on my computer also, on my, uh, my desktop. So, and what are the two sheds used for? Normal gardening, things like that?
Yes.
Lawn mowers, you know, the typical, see, you're telling me, this, this conforms with the neighborhood completely?
Yes, yes.
Not out of character?
No.
I have nothing further.
Thank you, Mr. Wisdom, is there anything further from the board? Does the board have a motion?
Mr. Chair, make a motion to grant the application type two.
Motion is by Mr. Wisdom.
Second.
Second by Mr. Cunha, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Aye. Any opposed motion carries?
Case number 31 Joseph Young, care of Andrew Malguinera, properties located on the north side of Pacific Street, 100 feet west of Broadway Avenue, Port Jefferson Station. Applicant requests side yard and rear yard variances for proposing ground swimming pool, side yard variance for proposed pool deck.
Mr. Chairman, I have Andrew Malguinera for the applicant.
Andrew, you're back.
Yeah.
Very good. You've been, you've been sworn. I'm getting a lot of feedback. Not sure why. All right. Mr. Malguinera, why don't we have you give your appearance and present for this?
Andrew Malguinera for the applicant. Requesting for proposed in-ground pool here. Like, like the other case, we're not quite asked for six feet, eight feet here, although they did want six. I thought that was a little aggressive for the in-ground pool with this lot. So.
My question is, since you're asking for eight, do you really want? Not.
I really want eight on this one. Yeah, no, I mean, this one, I mean, yeah, I mean, as you can see from the survey. You know, pushing it in anymore would be, you know, up against the house a little too close, I believe. And the sun deck is a ground level deck for sunbathing, as you know, I don't know how that goes. So we feel granted this applicant, application won't have any adverse effect in the neighborhood. And if the board has any questions, please let me know.
Thank you, Mr. Malguinera. The board sees that the concrete walk is probably said about 10 feet from the location of the proposed pool. You had a very limited area to place the pool. You're, you're, whoever drew the pool in didn't give us a, a dimension for the pool. Do you know what that is?
Oh, 18 by 36.
All right, obviously a 16 foot wide pool that we see most of the time would, would, would provide us with greater setbacks, but they've chosen an 18 foot.
Yes, yes, it's a pool they, their dream pool, I would assume.
All right, then. We see, we see the limitations in a setback in, in the area of the rear yard. Does any board member have any questions or concerns on this one? I'm not hearing any disavowable emotion.
And I had one comment.
Mr. Burksen.
Andrew, I, I don't know what the motion is going to be, but if you want an eight foot side yard, okay? And you come back here and say they put the pool in eight feet from the fence, it's not going to go over very well.
Absolutely not. I will, I will.
It will be, it will be the first, it will be the first pool we actually make anybody move.
I understood completely. I, the first thing I'll do when we, when we're done here is I'll, I'll make a call and, and hammer that home. So.
Well, yeah, certainly at least let them know that the, the fence is not on the property.
It's not the line. I understand, understood completely.
Mr. Chair, just have him stake it out.
Yes.
Does the board have a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
All right, well, I heard Mr. Cunha make a motion. I also heard someone else. I apologize. I don't see who it was. Mr. Lazar. All right, so I, I'll take those, the motion and the second by Mr. Cunha and Mr. Lazaru. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thanks, guys. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Case number 32 Matthew Matera, care of Christine Nicole. Property is located on the north side of Rexmere Avenue, 115 feet east of Abner Drive, Farmingville. Applicant requests front yard setback variance for existing seven by eight foot deck with roof over. Also permission for existing one-story residence addition and finished basement on a 50-foot wide lot.
Mr. Chairman, I have Christine Nicole for the applicant.
Very good. Mr. Nicole, we can see you, you are mute. Can you unmute yourself, please? Before, it was someplace to your left. I know that you can do it, Mr. Nicole. Yes, you can. Come on. I swear it was something to your left before, not, not to the right. Right? Yeah. She's hitting a bunch of buttons.
I got it.
Oh, look at that.
I had to wait till the screen popped up. Sorry.
All right, no, not a problem.
Thank you for your patience.
No problem. Welcome back. You've previously been sworn. Let's take an appearance for the record, please.
Thank you. Christine Nicole offices at 18 Railroad Avenue in Center Mariches. Mr. Chairman and members of the board, I miss you guys. Anyway, the subject property is located in Farmingville. The lot is 50 by 183. There are many 50-foot lots, as you can see in your aerial on the street. My client regions recently purchased the house in May and it was quickly discovered, as I foiled everything, that there were non-permitted structures on the property. The rear addition, according to historic aerials.com, was built sometime between 1974 and 1980. The basement has a CO for a 1976 dig out. That's what they called it back then. And back then basements were permitted on 50-foot lots. It is finished, but it's only 260 square feet, so it's of little value except for storage. I provided you photos of that small area that's finished in the basement. The front porch is two foot bigger than what's permitted. And it's still, it still maintains a 44 point, 44 and a half front yard, similar to the other front porches in the area. I want to point out that there were no setback requirements for the rear addition. It, you know, the, the house is, I mean, the property is very deep. It's just that it's a 50-foot lot and as you know, any additions on a 50-foot lot require a variance. The house next door is much larger. It's, I believe it's on a 60-foot lot and it's very, very close to the property line. So I don't think what we're asking for is out of character for the neighborhood. And again, it was purchased this way, albeit I know he was aware when he purchased it that it had issues. He just didn't realize what they were. We don't intend to use the cellar for habitable space. We just want to use it for storage. It's not a very big area. If the board has any questions, I'm here.
Thank you, Mr. Cole. Questions from the board?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Cunha.
Yes.
Hi, Chris. How are you?
Hello.
Okay, by my calculations, it looks like the entire footprint of the house is just about 760.
Yes.
Square feet, 770.
Yes.
And this lot, even if it was under a small lot ordinance, it would be well over 1,000 square feet permitted for the first floor.
Correct. You're right. Yeah.
Okay, you said that the basement was finished. Then what part of the basement was finished? I didn't catch that.
Um, it's a small area. It's, uh, let's see, wait a minute. I have a CO for the dig out. I have a CO for the dig out. It's, and it is 20 by 23. So it's a very small area. And I, I don't think it's under the addition. I think it's under some other part of the house. It's 20 by 23. And that's the part that is finished. So it's 260 square feet.
Okay, and you have a CO for, for an actual digging or, or digging out of the basement?
For the basement. Again, no, I don't think the basement will came into effect until 1990, you know?
And I'm assuming that the house is a crawl the rest of it?
Yes, correct.
Okay. All right. And the front porch, as the chairman stated, it's approximately two feet bigger than what's permitted. However, your setback 51, 50, 48 feet probably approximately from the road?
I think it's 44, but I need to say that I, I took a picture in line with the house next door and it's kind of in line with the porch on the house next door. And if you look at your aerials, as I drove up and down the block, many people have front porches. Again, they replaced the cement with the front porch. This happens to have a roof and that's why I need to request a variance.
Yeah, it, it does look like a, an old, an old, like, basically something covering an old cement.
Correct. That's exactly what it is. Yes.
Entrance. Okay, no further questions, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Cunha. Is there anything further from the board? Does the board have a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I'd like to grant the application as presented type two.
Motion is by Mr. Cunha, seconded by Mr. Lazaru. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed motion carries? Thank you.
Thank you and good night, guys.
Good evening, yes.
Case number 33 Guy and Fiorella Marino, two Williston Road, Sound Beach. Properties located on the south side of Bellrose Road, 219 feet northeast of Corona Road, Sound Beach. Applicant requests rear yard variance for existing wood platform, side yard variance for existing shed located in the required side yard.
Mr. Chairman, I have Fiorello Marino. Thank you. Mr. Chairman, I also have a presentation. From.
We can't.
All right, I see, Mr. Marino. Sir, can you hear us?
Yes.
Very good. You are presenting on behalf of yourself this evening?
Correct.
All right, very good. If you could just please raise your hand and give your attention to the board's attorney, John Doyle. Just where you in?
It's good to know the truth, the whole truth, the whole truth will help you.
I will.
Thank you. I, that's, I, I understand now. We have a PowerPoint to presentation on this application. Mr. Marino, let's just start with your name and address, please.
Guy Marino, two Williston Road, Sound Beach, New York.
Very good. And just for full disclosure, I understand your wife is an employee of the town.
Correct, in the IT department.
Very good. All right, then. We do have your, your PowerPoint up. I think Mr. Vega is assisting you. What would you like to tell us?
We are requesting a variance for a seven by 10 shed, which was existing there when we bought the house in 2013. And, and eight by eight deck, which is pretty much a slab on the floor. That's in the rear yard, the backyard. Which really can't be seen from the street. So as you can see, the shed in the driveway setback.
Yes, we see the shed in the driveway and we see a wood platform. Is that what the two blue chairs and the table?
Correct.
Are those the two structures that you're seeing variance really for? Okay. And this, very good. So did you want to tell us anything specifically about those structures or how their setbacks compared to others in your neighborhood?
Well, actually, the shed is very common. There's almost every other yard, there's a shed on the property line due to the size of the lots. We couldn't move the shed anywhere that it wouldn't be in compliance. And we included a number of photos within a one-block radius of sheds on the property line, some of which are close to, can be seen at the street, close to the street.
All right, sir. If there's nothing further, I'll ask for questions from the board.
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Lazaru.
Mr. Lazaru, okay. Um, I'm not seeing anything on my screen with regards to your presentation or any pictures, so I'm still going to continue. Tell me what that wooden platform is all about.
Just an area to put chairs in the backyard. It's an eight by eight. It's just a slab. It's not concreted in. And yeah, just an area to put chairs and a table on the lawn.
I see. If I'm not mistaken, this looks like it's, where is, oh, I see. Bellrose Road is the entrance. So where the wooden platform is, is the rear yard.
Correct. It's against the rear retaining wall.
I was just trying to reorient. And the existing metal shed has been there since when?
Well, it's when we purchased the house in 2013. It's been there before then.
Right. And you, you did say that this is quite common for sheds to be as close to the side or rear or wherever throughout the neighborhood?
Yes, as I included within a one-block radius, there's many.
I see. I have no further questions, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Lazaru. Is there anything further from the board? All right, does the board have a motion?
Grant the application type two.
Motion is by Mr. Lazaru to grant the application. Second, it looked like from Mr. Masarella. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed motion carries? Mr. Marino, I need to tell you that we need to get a copy of that PowerPoint presentation for the file. Do we have it already? We don't. All right, so you'll, you'll have to.
You have it. You're running it from there.
We are running it from here. I'm going to leave that to all of you IT people. I'm just, just making a statement that I, I need a copy of the PowerPoint for the file. So.
We need a printed version.
We need a printed version.
Okay.
All right, so if you can accommodate us, I'd appreciate that. Maybe if you could have it dropped off at the Board of Appeals office by Friday. Take care of things. All right, well, we thank you very much for coming out to present your case. The board's made a motion on it. The application was granted. Thank you very much for coming out. Right, that would conclude the two o'clock interval calendar. We're going to go straight to holdovers after just regrouping. Because I believe that we have two cases on the holdover calendar, one that we're taking testimony from.
Case numbers 13 and 14 of July 15, 2020, Eastport Gas Corp. 520 Montauk Highway, Eastport. Properties located on the northeast corner, Montauk Highway and Union Avenue in Eastport. Applicant requests the following relief for proposed reconstruction of existing motor vehicle fueling station. Minimum lot area, 15,000 square feet required, 9,781.64 square feet exists. Minimum front yard setback variance for existing canopy, 25 feet required from Montauk Highway, two feet requested. Also permission for existing detached sign to be located less than the required 12 feet from Montauk Highway and Union Avenue. 6.6 foot, 7 inches and 0.8 inches respectively, and located within the 30-foot triangle at intersection.
And the record should reflect that this matter was heard by the board on July 15, 2020 and held over for written comments only. The, the board directed the applicant back to HDAC to discuss a compromise. And I, as I understand it, we have received both communication from HDAC and applicant's counsel indicating that, that meeting did in fact occur. And we have their, I believe that we have an HDAC. You can read that writing for the record.
Yes, I have, we have revised plans from Keith Brown.
And it was attached, with an attached letter. What's the date of the letter?
Um, the letter is dated July 14. He submitted revised plans where he reduced the pump aisle.
I just bear with.
This is what came with the plans that I showed you yesterday. July 14. From, do you want me to state? Okay. All right, I have revised plans from Keith Brown. He reduced the size of the pump aisle and fueling canopy from 22 by 28 feet to 18 feet by 38 feet. And in addition, the canopy is now set back four foot, six inches from Montauk Highway as compared to two foot, six inches from Montauk Highway. That's the revision. And then we have input from the HDAC as well as Mr. Gleason. So the input from HDAC states, by memorandum dated June 12, the HDAC offered recommendations to the Board of Appeals. The HDAC reconsidered this matter and the revised plans prepared by our design last dated July 28, 2020 at their August 11 meeting and decided that while they still stand by their prior recommendations, but they have additional comments and recommendations as follows. The HDAC continues to strongly recommend denial of the above referenced application based on the oversized, out of scale nature of the existing slash proposed canopy on a small property prominently situated in the heart of the Eastport Historic District. The HDAC also remains opposed to the existing internally illuminated, oversized detached sign. The HDAC remains deeply concerned about the proposed legalization of this existing large out of proportion fuel canopy on this small property. large out of proportion fuel canopy on this small property in a sensitive and prominent location in the heart of the Eastport Historic District. The HDAC is opposed to the concept of a fuel canopy in this location. It would set a dangerous precedent for the town's historic district if this type of canopy is granted. The HDAC has been consistent with recommending no canopies in historic districts and historic transitional areas, not only for this gasoline station, but also in the case of Majid Satakit Associates LLC, and in the case of USA Gas Station, 230 Montauk Highway Center, Mariches. Consistent treatment of those gasoline stations in historic districts and transition zones is of the utmost importance to the HDAC. And the precedent to deny a canopy in the historic transitional area has been set and upheld by the Supreme Court. In the subject case, it is in the historic district proper, which even which is even more sensitive and should receive the same treatment as the denial of Majid Associates, which was located in the transitional area and should be denied. The nature and character of the Eastport Historic District will be changed by this canopy. Its illegal construction does not serve as the basis for establishing same. The nature and character of this historic district is similar to that of the old Satakit Historic Transitional Area where Majid Associates is located. The historic district is a rural, quiet, picturesque and quaint hamlet area still holding on to its historic and rural charm. Eastport developed after 1772, when Sea Tuck Creek was dammed and a road constructed across it. Originally a hamlet of fishermen, sailors and small farms, by 1915, Eastport was the center of the duck industry. The historic district has an unusually large percentage of the original structure still remaining. While the HDAC will remain generally opposed to the concept of a fuel canopy in this location, it will defer to the appropriate boards and or authorities at the town who might find the proposed canopy to be necessary and appropriate on the property. Therefore, the HDAC has thoughtfully considered how the canopy might be redesigned to fit into the small site in such a sensitive location. While the HDAC is opposed to the fuel canopy, should another appropriate board and or authority at the town officially find the proposed canopy to be necessary and appropriate on the property and approve same, the HDAC would then offer the recommendations for condensed scale and minimal visual impact for further review and consideration only after approvals from the board or authority at the town of Brookhaven as follows. The design alternatives presented to date do not do enough to achieve the HDAC's prior recommendations. For the small lot, tight positioning to the street and prominent historic district location, any proposed canopy must be further reduced in size and scale. It is suggested that a maximum size of 10 by 30 might achieve a more appropriate scale. It is stressed that this would be only the minimum necessary sized canopy to cover only the fuel dispensing island and fire suppression system to allow fueling under its cover, but not necessarily cover the entire vehicles, and no canopy is still preferred by the HDAC. The proposed 16-foot height with approximately 14-foot clearance seems excessive and unnecessary. While the applicant represents this to be a standard and necessary height, the HDAC suggests that this site should receive customized, not standard, height should a canopy be permitted. The HDAC recommends that the height of the canopy be reduced further. The HDAC supports the low-profile, flat roof canopy with approximate with approximately maximum one to six inch high cornice fascia minimum needed to contain fire suppression system, which has now been presented. However, the HDAC recommends that it be surfaced with horizontal boards of hardy plank or equal product, not vinyl, with a nominal six inch width with reveal between them and mitred corners to wrap around the canopy with no signage or illumination. The HDAC supports the proposed coffered reflective ceiling plan. The detached sign should be further reduced in size, height, scale and design, and simplified to be a simple wooden style board and post sign without the decorative brickwork. The HDAC strongly recommends against internally illuminated signage, including against automated lighting of the gas prices. Provide detailed drawings and specifications of all signage and lighting for further HDAC review. Site lighting shall not exceed Kelvin rating of 3,000 and shall be minimized as much as possible, including on signage. Provide augmented detailed landscape plan for HDAC review. The current plan does not allow for enough landscaping to appropriately soften the site at this important and prominent corner in the historic district. The proposed sign, lighting, landscaping and building changes are subject to further HDAC review only after the other items have been addressed. The HDAC strongly recommends to the appropriate board and authorities at town of Brookhaven who might consider the proposed canopy that they consider imposing a restriction against a convenience store at this location based on the small parcel size and community character. That's what HDAC had to say, and I do have correspondence from, I believe, Jim Gleason. Do you want me to read that into the record or?
Yes, if it's long and length, I could assist you in that regard.
It's about four pages. I'll read it. All right, this is dated August 12. It's from the East Mariches Property Owners Association. As requested, applicant went before the HDAC yesterday to attempt to persuade them to change their previous recommendations. The applicant was unsuccessful. This is the eighth decision by HDAC reaffirming two basic findings. First, the Eastport Gas Corp. site is an important, indeed central property in the Eastport Historic District. And second, the overall design of the proposed canopy and the main sign are out of character with the historic district and should not be allowed. They don't belong in the historic district. The committee's finding significantly impact, if not control, a significant element of your decision on this application, namely, community character. Applicant has consistently disregarded the historic character of the neighborhood in which the subject site is located. You may have noted the applicant's arguments focus regularly more on function and practicality than the impacts of its proposals on historic neighborhood. One document East Mariches Property Owners Association did not have prior to the July 15 hearing was applicant's memorandum of law. Here are some thoughts on it. Applicant seems to almost boast that it has had to make several, seven previous changes to the dimensions of its proposed canopy. What applicant and its counsel have proven by so many small incremental changes is that they started way too big with little appreciation of the value of the historic district's character. Applicant's argument on neighborhood character is off base in a number of respects. It argues that using the site as a gas station will not change the character of the neighborhood, but that is not an issue before this board or any other public agency since the CEU was issued for that use. Applicant argues that letting the existing sign remain in place will not change the character of the neighborhood since it's been in place since 2011, but the argument does not count since it has been illegal since 2011, and the applicant wants to legalize the property and is now seeking a variance for a new sign as well as a new canopy. Applicant argues that the setback of other nearby buildings and signs prove that neighborhood character is not adversely impacted by structures closer to the road than permitted under the code, but only legal comparables that were not preexisting may be used for such an argument. An applicant offers no evidence regarding their legality or preexistence. Since the properties referenced are in a historic district, many predated the town zoning. Applicant argues that the proposed canopy would be in character with the historical use of gasoline stations dating back years. While the use of canopies may go back years, perhaps even to 1916, the Eastport Historic District structures go back to the 1800s, and it is the style and dimensions of the proposed canopy rather than its use that clearly puts it out of character with the historic neighborhood it is in. The design of early gas station canopies was quite different. Applicant's own conclusions on this point is telling. Applicant respectfully submits that granting the requested relief will not change the commercial character of the surrounding area nor cause a detriment to any nearby properties. Yes, the surrounding area is commercial, but it is also historic. That's what applicant misses or ignores. While we agree that some variance for the main sign is necessary, given the postage stamp size of the site, we believe that it can be moved somewhat eastward to reduce the substantiality of the variance without impeding traffic flow on the site. Not incidentally, we propose to the HDAC that the garden area at the corner be enlarged around a relocated sign. We offered this very rough sketch to show ideas for the corner, not all elements in the sketch before you know. The sign would be located where the small rectangle is in the green quarter circle. There's a little sketch here. Certainly, given the small size of the site, exact dimensions would have to be figured carefully. At the HDAC meeting yesterday, applicant's engineer offered only general conclusions, of course, negative, on the idea careful calculations should be presented and impartially tested. Applicant asked in its memo for a variance for a front two foot, six inch setback for the canopy. It's July 28. Filed plans show a four foot, six inch setback. While we agree that if a canopy is to be allowed at all, some variance is necessary for it to fit in the small site, in no event should a variance less than what the plans show, four foot, six inches, be allowed. To justify having a canopy, applicant argues that most gas stations have them, but it does not show how many of them, if any, are in historic districts. Lacking that information, the comparison applicant made is meaningless. Applicant just about admits that the variance requested are substantial, but seeks to minimize the importance of their substantiality by citing a string of irrelevant cases. Even the parentheticals in the citations demonstrate that the cases are irrelevant. They make no reference to historical neighborhoods. The board is to weigh all of those factors set out in town law. Applicant admits that the need for the requested variance relief was self-created by the prior owner, but argues that his ignorance of the problems when he acquired the property should absolve him. Not quite, he bought a gas station on a lot obviously too small for the use. He evidently failed to engage in any due diligence that would have made him aware of the illegality of the canopy and sign, and that he was paying too much. And most importantly, he said he had a partner in the group that had owned the property and constructed the canopy and sign. Finally, I regret having to go into this again, but it is the applicant's memo. There is no Eastport Civic Association. The sign is the letter applicant relies on signed as individuals. They were at the East Mariches resident, an Eastport resident who lives on the Southampton side of San X Creek, who is in the process of relocating. A person you've heard from who lives in the village four buildings east of the subject site is Marie Kinnery. Her web message is attached for your convenience along with web messages from three other Eastport residents. Each residence opposes the variance. Conclusion, the requested variances should not be granted. If you are of mind to grant either, the variances should be limited as indicated above. And that was from Jim Gleason. And that's all I have.
Right, I will note for the record by looking at the chat chains that they are request by both by the applicant's counsel and by Mr. Gleason to continue to speak on the application. The understanding was and the direction was that we were taking written comment only. We have the written comment, we have the revised plans, the letter from the applicant. There's nothing further that the board intends to do with it, so I appreciate you offering to speak. We are not taking further testimony on the application. So if there's any, if there's any questions or comments, Mr. Brown is now objecting. If there are any questions or comments from board members, I'll take them. And if not, I'm going to ask for a motion on the application.
Mr. Chairman, move to close and hold.
All right, Mr. Cooney moves to close and hold. Second by Mr. Burke Son, all in favor? Any opposed motion carries? Gentlemen, I know that you're both eager to speak. I will tell you that the board will take a very serious look at this application and make the decision that we believe is right. So I appreciate all of the efforts put into presenting and commenting on the application. And maybe I'll just leave it there. We have one further case, once we can put this one back together again.
Okay. Case numbers 12 through 15 of April 22, 2020, Wall-to-Wall Management LLC, care of Larry Davis, 175 Oak Street, Patchogue. Properties located on the north side of Pine Road, 193 feet east of Wintergreen Drive in Quorum. Applicant requests division of a parcel into four plots, one, two, three and four, requiring a lot frontage variance for proposed one family dwelling on lot one, lot frontage variance for proposed one family dwelling on lot two, lot frontage variance for proposed one family dwelling on lot three, and lot frontage variance for proposed one family dwelling on lot four.
Mr. Chairman, I have Larry Davis for the applicant.
Mr. Chairman, like to recuse.
The record should reflect that Mr. Coonius are accusing the application. I believe that we are promoting Mr. Davis on behalf of the applicant.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman.
I see, I mean, I'm sorry, I hear you, Mr. Davis. We're just a bit delayed in video today, so be with us for a second, and I'm sure you will pop up. I know. Mr. Davis, you are with us now, can you hear us?
I can, Mr. Chairman, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. You, let's, I guess, start with your appearance on behalf of the application.
Certainly. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Larry Davis, 175 Oak Street, Patchogue, New York, for the applicant. Mr. Chairman, I understand Mr. Reed prepared a report on this file, and if we could have that read in, I would appreciate it.
Yes, I will, I will say that within the record should reflect that this matter was reviewed by the board's planner, and Mr. Reed is here to testify as to his findings.
Property is located on the north side of Pine Road, 153 feet east of Wintergreen Drive in the Hamlet Quorum. The applicant is proposing to divide the 231,636 square foot vacant parcel into four lots, with lot sizes ranging from 43,711 square feet to 98,955 square feet. Access to the proposed lots is intended via Pine Road for lots one and two, and Winterling Drive for lots three and four. Property is located within both the A1 Residence District and Hydrogeological Zone 3, which requires a minimum lot size of 40,000 square feet, and the proposal conforms to said requirements. It is noted that on July 27, 2020, the planning board approved a tap street application allowing access from the end of Winterling Street for lots three and four, and the approval was subject to the following conditions. All improvements as shown on survey, land division map W2M homes prepared by AJC Land and Survey, PLLC, showing a revision date of October 25, 2019. Highway work permits required. Construction of concrete curbing along the north side of Pine Road and subject to any Board of Zoning Appeals conditions. In terms of conformance, there are no flag lots within the 500-foot radius of the subject property. While it is noted that the parcel can yield at least four conforming lots without variance relief in terms of a planning board land division with a dedicated road, this may not be the desired option. For doing so would create double frontage lots on Wintergreen Drive, which is not recommended. Staff notes, proposed lots two and three are two times the size of the 40,000 square foot lot area requirement of the A1 zone at 98,955 square feet. And there is concern about potential further subdivision of the property, which could result in a circumvention of subdivision regulations, which include but are not limited to affordable housing mandates, dedicated retention areas, open space dedication, as well as secret segmentation issues and covenants restricting further subdivision, as well as imposed buffer and clearing limits are recommended should the board look favorably on the application.
All right, for the record, then, that does the comments, or that is the testimony of the board's planner, Mr. Davis. All right. For the record, then that does the comments or that is a testimony to the board's planner, Mr. Davis. How did you want to present?
Mr. Chairman, thank you. That report's pretty self-explanatory. We have a almost a seven acre piece of property here that we're dividing into four lots. As you can see by the configuration, it is narrow and very, very long. We've devised it in such a manner as to restrict further development to keep it at the four lots that we are requesting. I did a yield map on it, and I believe that we could get six lots as of right by putting in town infrastructure and roads. My client has decided that he would rather develop it in the manner that's proposed today. As Mr. Reed has indicated, we did get tap street review off of Winterling Street for lot numbers three and four, and lot numbers one and two are proposed to come in off of Pine. I've reviewed the recommendations from staff regarding the covenants and the buffers. There is no objection to those. And we would ask that the board look favorably upon this application.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. I will note for the record that we have about a half inch of written communication from neighbors in opposition to the application, which are part of the record, and I'm going to make them part of the record. I'm not going to necessarily read each one of them. Ms. Ricordi's done enough of that this evening already. Is there, are there any questions on the board? All right, then. We have your agreement to the conditions of the board's planner. The board will deliberate and we'll have a decision for you.
Do you want, Mr. Chairman, I spoke to most of those neighbors. They called me after the hearing. Do you want me to address their concerns? Because I believe what we have proposed and with the buffer zones that Mr. Reed has proposed will address and accommodate most of those neighbors' concerns.
Yes, if you want to enlarge the record any further with with those comments, I'd be happy to take them.
All right. Most of the concerns were that the neighbors were worried about a driveway going along the, or excuse me, not a driveway, a road going behind their houses and worried about traffic that would impede their ability to enjoy their their backyards. Had we gone with a full-blown subdivision map, there would have been a road from Winter Lane Street all the way down to Pine Street. And I can understand their concerns. With the way the maps are devised and the buffer zones that have been created, much of that is alleviated. The backyards are only going to be impacted by one house being constructed on the north end and one's house being constructed on the south end. Those are the flag lots. We've also created a buffer area whereby the people directly to the west of our property will not be, there'll be a twenty foot buffer between the driveway and the houses to be constructed. So we have addressed their concerns in our application. And again, I've asked the board to look favorably on upon our application tonight, Mr. Chairman.
All right, Mr. Davis, I believe that we have speakers on the application. I do have.
Mr. Chairman, I have a Bruce Bennett.
Yes, I saw Mr. Bennett raising his hand during the presentation. We can, you can promote anyone that's here wishing to speak on the application.
Again, Mr. Chairman, there are a number of people here who I don't know if they're here for this final case.
All right, everyone else that is sitting as attendees. This is our last case of the evening and last time to speak. So if there is anyone sitting as an attendee that wishes to speak on this last case, please let Mr. Vega know, please raise your hand, please utilize the chat function. Mr. Bennett, we can see you. Can, can you hear us?
Yes, I can. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir. I'm going to ask you just to raise your hand and give your attention to the board's attorney.
Just to tell the truth, the whole truth and I'm about to help you.
All right, then. So let's start with your name and address.
Okay, my name is Bruce Bennett. The city of Colby Drive, which is the property immediately to the east.
Yes, sir. Yes.
I would hope that the correspondence that I sent in is probably amongst the inches of paperwork that you have. So I don't know if I want to belabor the issue in terms of going over it again. It's up to you. But based upon this, the first time I've ever seen the subdivision of the property since the sign went up. And as I'm sure you're all aware, this thing has been dragged out for months. And I know that there are many people in this neighborhood who are significantly concerned about this. And I was glad to hear the comments by the gentleman earlier from the town regarding the concerns, because one of the concerns that I would have, I've been, I've been a resident of this house for thirty years from when it was a brand new development and long story, but it was supposed to be a a green belt initially, and I don't know what happened with that. I guess that changed. And maybe that has something to do with the minimum forty thousand square feet. But again, to touch on many of the things that were brought up. Again, you can just look at the the map. This is a significant impact to twenty eight families who live surrounding this property. So I would really like and hope that the the planning board takes serious consideration to the impact that this can have on twenty eight plus families. Okay. And second of all, it's easy to say that the property is now being subdivided into only four lots. But some of them lots are very big, and I'm sure there's going to be some stipulations that set forth in terms of development. But I've lived on this property for thirty years. We've had that heavily wooded area for thirty years. We have not had any problems with that property in terms of vandalism, in terms of mischief or anything where we've had to call a board or the Suffolk Police. Something like this, if it becomes subdivided, and even with a, I thought I heard ninety thousand square foot of property, that's an awful big playground for whoever's going to own that piece of property. And that's going to have a significant impact on the neighborhood.
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Bennett.
We have no, I like to mention, we have no flag lots in this neighborhood. If you stand back on this, you don't have to do it here, but later on, when you deliberate this, you'll see that there are a significant number of vacant areas around this area. Another concern that I would have for the people that also live within a mile or mile and a half radius is setting a precedent. Because you can look immediately on the other side of Pine Road where house number two is, and there's something very similar, a vacant area very similar to that that runs all the way down to the town of Port Haven Park, the baseball field. So I'm concerned, and you can also see other areas around here where where if this decision is made to allow this, a precedent is going to be set. And then finally, again, going back to the twenty eight people that are going to be impacted by this, it does affect the character of the neighborhood. This is something that the houses to the west of me on Winter Green, those houses are even older than mine. And again, they they're used to living in this area. It's easy to say it's only going to be for lots. I know that the people who live on Winterling, I don't know who the gentleman must have spoken with, but I've spoken to one of them, and he was very upset with us on on the Winterling and Wintergreen side. So I don't see how, you know, you can't say they're not. I don't know which side's going to have the access. But people in house number seven, that house is vacant right now. And like I said, I'm not going to say who, but one of the other two people are not happy with it on the other side of Winterling off of Wintergreen. So with that, again, you know, there are no flag lots. It affects the character of the neighborhood, concerned about the safety, and also setting a precedent, because if you scope back in your time when you deliberate it, take a look at all the other areas in here and, you know, it has potential to have a lot of flag lots. And to me, that's not the neighborhood when you start doing things like this, even if they're saying that, well, we could fit six pieces, six plots, or we're going to get out to four. Then you're just giving people a big playground. And then to me, that becomes a policing issue.
All right, Mr. Bennett, I believe that your testimony is beginning to become duplative. I, I, and I'm speaking for my board members also understand that when there is a developed area surround that surrounds an undeveloped area, that it's very difficult to deal with that change, especially when you believe that that was going to be like that forever. I will tell you, and there are some things that you, I'm not sure that you understand about the application, but I just want to make sure that everyone is on the same plane here. The applicant can develop this parcel without any action from this board. It's not, the applicant does not need this board to act in order to develop this parcel. Its alternative is to go in with a road to town specs fifty foot wide from one end to the other and build houses between four and six, depending upon the configuration, because this is almost a seven acre parcel in a one acre zone. That's the difficulty here. So what you're saying is that you shouldn't allow flag lots. Well, the flag lots come from the fact that instead of putting a town spec road straight down the middle, straight down everyone's backyard. The board is asked to consider a lot frontage variance from the established roadways into the parcel, two on one end and two on the other. The benefit of that, obviously, is that we're not dealing with with a disturbance and clearing anywhere near what would happen if the applicant chose to go the other way and to put a town spec road in. It does create precedent for a flag lot, but in looking at this particular area, it appears to be fairly developed to the point where that may not be, that precedent may not be a concern. In terms of the leaving large areas undeveloped, as you know, two will be at one end and two are proposed to be at the other end, and there's a larger area in between. What our board, our board's planner did was he looked at it and said the, that, that those areas should have a covenant, meaning document filed with the Suffolk County Clerk covenanting that they will never be developed and they will be buffers. They will continue undeveloped such in in the manner that they exist presently today. So right now, there's, there's a, you mentioned playground. It's playground from one end to another. What we're, what we're doing the best to do is to to resolve a situation where it will be some development because the, because the applicant is entitled to development without any, any action of the sport. It will be some development, but we can curb against future development. And we, and we can, we can assist the neighbors in obtaining as much of a buffer alongside and in the center and forward and to the rear of the houses as possible to make it the most palatable, if you will, to the neighbors that it most affects. We recognize that these are houses that are going to go behind others and in an area where where they've never been before, and no one wants it. I just don't think everyone understands that they don't need us. They can go and do it themselves and create a road as big as Colby and Wintergreen, maybe wider if the town specs have changed and put their houses in. This is the proposal that the applicant has presented, one could say is has least intrusion into this area. And maybe one of the better options. I don't know. The board hasn't deliberated. I understand that what you're saying. I appreciate the fact that you've waited to be heard on it. We've been waiting since April, as you know, for tap street review. I'm not sure that, I wish that all of the, I wish this was a public hearing where you were here and I could show you. I could show you the, the proposal. I could show you where the buffers would be. I could show you the sections of the code that say this is what the applicant is entitled to do. I can't do that with you, sir. And I'm not sure what else to tell you. The board will deliberate on what's before it. Mr. Davis, did you have any responsive comments?
Mr. Mr. Chair, I believe that you addressed everything that I was going to address. I just want the neighbors to understand there was great care in developing and designing this plan to mitigate and minimize the impact on the neighborhood. And I just and this is in due candor, we really worked hard to make sure that we could affect effectively build what we wanted to build and put the minimum impact on all of these houses that we knew we were going to affect in some way. And I just wanted to put that out there, Mr. Chair.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Bennett. I appreciate you, you're listening to what I've had to say. I know it's hard because we are two different locations and you're only looking at your computer screen right now. Was there any, anything else that you want to add for my board members?
The, the board's time and attention.
All right. Thank you very much, sir. Is there anything further from the board on this application, Mr. Vega?
Mr. Chair, I have a Rachel who also like to speak.
Yes. Why don't we promote Rachel? In the interim, are there, oh, she's here already.
Yes, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Just give your attention, please, to the board attorney to be sworn.
Certainly.
Just to tell the truth, the whole truth and I'm about to help you.
I do.
Very good. Let's start with your name and address.
Thank you. So my name is Rachel Siler, S for Sam, E I L E R.
Yes.
And I reside with my husband, Robert, at twenty five Winter Green Drive.
Very good. Just, I'm looking at the aerial to to see your location. Twenty five. I see where that is. Okay. I, so, so you were, you were in the, in the chat session, in the chat area before asking if we had your written comments. We do. What did you want to tell us? And if you'd like, you can read yours, yours yourself.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was not prepared to read my remarks into the record, but I appreciate that you acknowledged that they have already been entered into the record and thank you to the rest of the board for considering our, thank you for considering our neighbors' concerns. I just wanted to reiterate our existing concern to reinforce and echo my neighbor, Mr. Bennett's concern. And to just go on the record and state that, you know, while I understand and appreciate great care has been taken in the development plans, and I appreciate the relief and mitigation of direct impacts right behind our yard. I do want to state on the record that we've never been approached or had any discussions with Mr. Davis or anybody else directly connected to this development project. We would have appreciated the opportunity to enter into conversation and to have our concerns addressed by Mr. Davis and the party that he's representing. I just wanted to enter that officially into the record, because he did state in his testimony that he had addressed through direct conversation with neighbors, the concerns that had been expressed. We have never had a conversation with with Mr. Davis, nor have we ever received a written or email communication or been approached by him, his office, or anyone associated with this development project.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Davis.
Mr. Chair, I can only tell you that when I did this mailing personally, and when I send the mailing out, I sign on behalf of my client. I put my address and telephone number for people to contact me. And many of the neighbors did contact me. This neighbor happened to not contact me, but that is the communication that I sent out with my name, my address, and my telephone number on it.
Respectfully, Mr. Davis, we never received a mailing from you. And I would like to see a record if you do have one, that you sent us a mailing, because we never received.
Was that the mailing which would be the notice for the hearing?
That's correct.
Her last name is, I'm sorry, Rachel.
Tyler, S X M, E I, O U R.
All right, we were looking at the return receipts or the, I'm sorry, the mailings, and we'll see, we'll look into that. Did any board members, while we're waiting, have any questions or comments? And the, the address was twenty five Winter Green. Is it?
Correct. That is correct. And thank you, Mr. Chairman and Board. I appreciate your time.
No problem. I'm just looking at the radius survey twenty five. See, I have that's twenty five Colby. Hold on a second. Twenty five Winter Green. Yes. All right. So we have the mailing that was the receipt from the mailing that went to your house stamped by the post office. We're just looking to see whether we have the returns. Mr. Davis.
I received this back from the post office.
All right, so that it was not, not picked up or?
It has returned to sender, refused, unable to forward.
Yes, Mr. Davis, you know that we need that for the file. So if you could, don't mind forwarding it to us, we'd appreciate it.
I would be very happy to do that.
So, so, so Rachel, I understand that you have no notice of it because it was not received by you. It was sent to you, but either not deliverable or or not picked up. In either event, we need to see and the code requires that at least the attempt be made, not certainly that doesn't guarantee contact, but once the certified mailing is, is sent out, the code is satisfied that the notice conditions have been met. All right. Is there anything further from anyone on the application? Again, the board will look very hard at this and make the best decision that we can. I'm going to ask for a motion, please.
Put the clothes and hold.
Motion is by Mr. Burksen. Chair will second it all in favor.
I.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, I'm just going to, before we, before we go to executive session, I'm going to ask the board for a motion to reopen. Be with me. I know I have a number of things to give to you. I'm just looking for my worksheet. Okay. Motion to reopen case thirteen through fourteen of July fifteen, two thousand twenty, in the name of Eastport Gas Corp. Does the board have that motion?
Oh, no.
Motion second, I'm a middle in favor. Any opposed? Motion carries. Motion carries. The applicant's counsel has requested an opportunity to respond to the H D C and civic letters that Ms. Recordy read into the record and the circumstances, I'm going to give them that opportunity. Same 10 days written comments and to be read into the record at the next hearing. And that will, that will be it with that, that application. So is there a motion then to hold over until September, August 26? August 26, August 26. The applicant's, the representative's comments to be received within 10 days. And we'll make them part of the record then again. And I can't reiterate this enough, no further testimony. I think this board spent several hours on this last time it was on.
I'm gonna, I want to let you know in advance, I'm opposing the motion to extend this time.
Fully, fully understand. And Mr., so I'm going to ask for that, I will make that motion again, adjourning to August 26 with 10 day written comment period. Responsive to those two items sent into the record.
Second, Chair.
All right, you know what? Let me pull that motion back and make this motion. Mr. Berksen, you might, you might like this one a little bit better. Motion would be to close, close the application with the, with the proviso that the applicant's counsel can, within 10 days, provide the board with further written comment. It will not appear again on the board's agenda, apart from the requirement to obviously make a decision. So it's to close today with, with the proviso, the applicant's counsel can, within 10 days, provide responsive comment to the letters read into the record today on behalf of his client. Chair is going to make that motion. Does, is there a second? Mr. Berksen, did you want to second that motion?
No.
Only, someone seconded it, who did that? Mr. Cunha, all in favor? Any opposed? It should reflect that motion carries five in favor with one opposed. This is not a back and forth situation, Mr. Gleason, so I've had enough comment. Thank you very much. And with that, I'm going to ask for a motion for executive session.
Oh, no.
Motion second, MMA in favor. Post motion carries, before we leave, executive session start to start. You want 10 minutes before we begin? All right, so what, it's 6:14, 6:30, executive session at 6:30. Thank you.
I don't know what it was about those. Oh, you pulled the chance again. Paul unmute. Not the camera unmute. I got us there's two different ones. I don't know which one it is. Now I can.
Anthony, when you go live, is it going to open up my screen because I can't get to my PDF on my.
You're live now.
We're like we're live now.
Oh, there it is. Okay, never mind. I gotta get to my desktop to be able to read that stuff. Okay, I'm good.
All good. Do we have a motion to resume the hearing?
We are missing Jim wisdom. Oh, no, not.
I see Jimmy is there a motion to resume the hearing? So move motion second have been made all in favor. And the opposed motion carries board members turning to today's worksheet. So with page number 12. Cases number 22 in the name of Jeremiah Hogan. Does the board have a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, move to.
Actually, wait, I'm sorry, Mr. Kuna. I circled the wrong case. It's case 23 Susan and James Hazen and Melissa Ruff. Does the board have a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I move to grant this presented.
Motion is by Mr. Kuni, second by Mr. Wisdom, all in favor. Any opposed? The record will reflect that Mr. Wisdom has opposed motion carries five in favor. Mr. Burson, I apologize. Mr. Burson's opposed motion carries five in favor with one opposed. Turning to page 22.
Twenty two.
I have, wait, I'm sorry. Twenty one.
Yes.
Yes, you're absolutely right. Case 21 cases 12 through, I'm sorry, page 21 cases 12 through 15 of April 22nd, 2020 in the name of wall-to-wall management LLC. Does the board have a motion?
Chairman, I move to grant subject to all mitigation measures of the BZ planner unlisted action.
Motion is by Mr. Burksen. Mr. Wisdom, I think you're seconding it. All in favor. Any any pose the record will reflect that Mr. Kuna's recused motion carries five in favor with one recusal. To page 23. Under request for grant extension case eight of August 8, 2018, the name of Nelson Zispand as a board of motion.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, Mr. Lazarus.
Prior grant of 8816 is extended for six months to expire to 821.
Motion is by Mr. Lazarus. Second by Mr. Wisdom, all in favor. I any opposed motion carries same request, but this one is case 32 of August 8, 2018, the name of Denise Maloney does a board of emotion.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, prior grant of 8818 is extended for six months to expire to 821.
Motion is by Mr. Lazarus, second by Mr. Wisdom, all in favor. Any opposed motion carries on the same page case four of February 7, 2018, the name of Frank Del Villar does a board of emotion.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, prior grant of 2718 is extended for final six month period to expire 2721.
Second motion is by Mr. Lazarus, second by Mr. Wisdom, all in favor. Any opposed motion carries to page 24 under extension of time to file covenants cases three and four of September 11, 2019, the name of Jared Bartholomew does a board of emotion.
Yes, Mr. Chair, the time to file the covenants is extended for three months from the date of the letter.
Motion is by Mr. Lazarus, second by Mr. Wisdom, all in favor. The opposed motion carries same request at the middle of the page cases 11 and 12 of January 30, 2019, in the name of John Springhorn and Karen Alejos, does the board have a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, the time to file covenants is extended for three months from the date of the letter.
Motion is by Mr. Lazarus, second by Mr. Wisdom, all in favor. Any opposed motion carries at the bottom of the page cases three and four of February 25, 2015, the name of Robert King Jr. Does the board have a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, the time to file covenants is extended for three months from the date of the letter.
Motion is by Mr. Second by Mr. Wisdom, all in favor. Any opposed motion carries turning to page 25 case six of May 22, 2018, the name of Bat. Any opposed motion carries turning to page 25 case six of May 22, 2018, the name of Baton Farmingville Wilti Incorporated does a board of motion.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, the time to find covenants is is extended to for three months from the date of the letter.
Motion is by Mr. Lazarus, second by Mr. Wisdom, all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed motion carries under request for reconsideration of motion. Case 41 of February 19, 2020, in the name of Thomas and Denise Wilson. Does the board have a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I moved that the prior grant of 31120 is amended to reflect approval for 10 foot front yard setback from Grand Avenue for pool. Remaining conditions as originally approved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Kuna, second by Mr. Burson, all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries to page 26 under modification of motion. Case 43 of August 21, 2018, the name of Robert Walsh, does a board of motion.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, prior grand of 82119 is modified to delete the wording from required covenant regarding detached shed greenhouse stating and access to any storage area be from pull downstairs only remaining conditions as originally approved.
That motion is by Mr. Mazarella, second by Mr.
Kuna.
Kuna, all in favor.
Okay, okay.
All in favor. Any opposed motion carries under request to reopen case 35 of March 11, 2020 in the name of Janine and Victor Stabile does a board of emotion.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I move to reopen for rehearing on October 7, 2020.
Motion is by Mr. Kuna.
Second.
Second is by Mr. Mazarella, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed motion carries at the bottom of the page case 38 of March 25, 2020, in the name of Mohammed Akbal, does a board of motion.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, the motion is to reopen for hearing on October 7, 2020.
Motion is by Mr. Mazarella, second by Mr. Kuna, all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed motion carries to page 27 case 25 of December 11, 2019, the name of Richard Laduka, does a board of emotion.
Chairman, move to allow for a new application to be filed.
Motion is by Mr. Burson, second by Mr. Kuna, all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries finally on this on that page case 16 of April 22, 2020, in the name of Page Development Incorporated. Does the board have a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chair, move that a new application may be filed.
Motion is by Mr. Kuna, second by Mr. Burson, all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed motion carries. Turning to page 29, case six of May 6, 2020, in the name of Robert Perino, does a board of motion.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, the motion is granted for permission, second story resident addition and height and square footage variance for existing detached garage. Denied for second story to detached garage and for ceiling height in storage area to exceed six feet. Storage area to be a maximum of 430 square feet and access by pull down stair only. Subject to the execution and filing in the office of the Suffolk County Clerk of covenants and restrictions that there be that there shall be no habitable habitable space, no plumbing or heating in detached garage and access to the storage area be pulled be by pull down stair only. Said covenants and restrictions shall be submitted to the town of Brookhaven Board of zoning appeals for review and approval prior to the filing with the Suffolk County Clerk within 180 days. Failure to comply with this requirement shall render this grant null and void. Subject to the removal of the existing existing dormer and access door on the east side of the detached garage, the removal of the existing internal fixed stairway to said storage area and the reduction of ceiling height down from 10 feet to six feet by lowering of the collar beams type two action.
That motion is by Mr. Mazarella, seconded by Mr. Lazarus, all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed motion carries to page 30. Case 53 of May 6, 2020, in the name of John Barber, does a board of motion.
The chairman removed the grant, the application is type two action subject to the execution and filing in the office of the Suffolk County Clerk of covenants and restrictions at the attached garage 23.7 feet by 23.3 feet shall never be converted to habitable space. Said covenant and restrictions shall be submitted to the town of Brookhaven Board of zoning appeals for review and approval prior to the filing with the Suffolk County Clerk within 180 days. They to comply with this requirement shall render this grant null and void. Said restrictions shall also appear on the certificate of occupancy. Subject to the filing of an application for a rental permit for the dwelling on the west side of the parcel, subject further to the requirements of chapter 81 of the code wetlands and waterways.
That motion is by Mr. Burson. Second by Mr. Wisdom, all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed motion carries to page 31 case 23 of June 17, 2020, in the name of Charles Johnson, does a board of a motion.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, granted for side yard setback and detached shed remainder denied pursuant to findings of fact and conclusions type two action.
Motion is by Mr. Mazarella, second by Mr. Wisdom, all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries turning to page 32 case 30th June 17, 2020, in the name of Raphael and Anna Guardi, does a board of a motion.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, denied pursuant to findings of fact and conclusion.
Motion by Mr. Lazarus, second by Mr. Mazarella, all in favor. Any opposed motion carries to page 33, taking only case one of October 23, 2018, the name of Anne Montanez, does a board of a motion.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, number one. Granted for permission to maintain 601 square foot finished basement to be utilized as an accessory apartment. Applicants request for a use variance not applicable as the board considers the relief requested as an extension of a nonconforming use. It's a type two action.
Motion is by Mr. Lazarus. Second by Mr. Mazarella, all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries on the same page case number two also in the name of Anne Montanez, does the board have a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, number two granted for extension of nonconforming use for eight foot by 12 foot resident addition with bay window for a 7.3 foot by 5.5 foot enclosed cellar entrance. In addition, granted as amended to delete request for 498 square foot heated recreation room with a bathroom on the second story of the garage for side yard setback for detached garage and shed. Subject to the removal of all heat sources and plumbing into detached garage. Subject to the filing of a garage covenant that there will be no habitable space, no plumbing or heating in the detached garage, and it's a type two action.
Motion is by Mr. Lazarus, second by Mr. Mazarella, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed motion carries. Bear with me just a second. All right, I'm sorry, board members turning to page 34. Cases eight. Nine and nine A of February 19, 2020, in the name of James Gordon. Does a board have a motion?
Chairman, move to deny the applications pursuant to findings of fact and conclusions.
Motion is by Mr. Burson, seconded by the chair, all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Abstain, Mr. Chair.
Motion carries record will reflect reflect that Mr. Kuna is abstained. And the motion carries five in favor with one abstention. That was page 34. All right, finally, board members turning to page 36. Is 15 of July 15, 2020, in the name of Ron Concomah Hub LLC in Hawkins Avenue Development, RHP 2 LLC. Does the board have a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I move to grant type two.
Question by Mr. Kuna to grant as a type two action, second by Mr. Lazarus, all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Motion made in second, you're all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed motion carries. Good to see you all. How good evening.
See you. See you next time. Hey, Paul, when are we gonna have another live one?
Yeah, Paul, before you go.
A live, a live hearing?
Yeah.
You have to wait for the governor, but we're still.
What about us old guys? Can we go?
Since, since we're still recording, I'm gonna leave this and you guys can call me whenever you want.
Okay.
Take care.
Bye bye.